Good morning. Welcome to the fourth hearing of the committee's inquiry into the relationship between the Dural caravan incident and the passage of relevant bills through the Legislative Council. My name is Rod Roberts and I am the Chair of the Committee, and I ask everybody in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Before we begin, I would like to make a few comments. Today, the Committee will hear from staff in the Office of the Premier and the Office of Minister for Police and Counterterrorism, who may have been present at New South Wales Police Briefings regarding the Dural caravan incident. I also note, following multiple attempts to invite the ministerial staff to attend a hearing, they were ordered by the Committee to give evidence under summons at a hearing last Friday, the 20th of June. They failed to comply with the summons. The Committee was of the view that the witnesses did not have a just cause or reasonable excuse for attending. And pursuant to sections seven through to nine of the Parliamentary Evidence Act 1901, the Committee then wrote to the President of the Legislative Council to request that he certify to a judge of the Supreme Court the issue of warrants for the arrest of the witnesses for the purpose of bringing them before the Committee. This decision was not taken lightly, but it was a decision entirely consistent with the Legislative Council's oversight role and its responsibilities to hold the executive to account. As the President advised the House on Wednesday, he sought advice from Mr Brett Walker S.C., who confirmed unequivocally that, one, ministerial staffers are able to be called before the Legislative Council Committees; two, the Committee followed the appropriate processes in summoning the witnesses; and three, there was no just cause or reasonable excuse for the witnesses not to attend. Based on this advice, the President intended to certify to a judge of the Supreme Court under section seven of the Parliamentary Evidence Act that the witnesses had failed to appear before the Committee without just cause and reasonable excuse. However, as the ministerial staff reconsidered their position and advised that they would appear before the Committee, the President told the House that he would take no further action. I welcome the decision of these staff. However, it is extremely disappointing that the Committee had to take the steps that it did to hear from witnesses who can shed light on the inquiry's terms of reference. I reiterate my disappointment in the government's effort to avoid accountability and transparency over the course of the inquiry. This inquiry has clearly illustrated the reach of the Legislative Council's powers to call for persons and to compel the attendance of witnesses when necessary. Finally, to the witnesses appearing today, I note parliamentary privilege applies to the evidence that you give today. However, it does not apply to what you say outside of the hearing. So I urge you to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing your evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairnesses for inquiry participants. And I encourage Committee members and witnesses to be mindful of those procedures. So, welcome to appear before the Committee today. You are scheduled to give your evidence from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. And in the event members have no further questions, I will conclude our session earlier. Now, could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation? Start with you, Dr South.
Hello, I am Dr Tilly South and I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff to the Minister for Police and Counterterrorism. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr Nielsen.
My name's Ross Nielsen, I'm the Chief of Staff for the Minister for Police and Counterterrorism. And I solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that I will well and truly interpret the evidence that will be given and do all other matters and things that are required of me in this hearing to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr Cullen.
Thank you, Chair. James Cullen, I'm the Chief of Staff to the Premier of New South Wales, Chris Minns. I swear by Almighty God that I will well and truly interpret the evidence that will be given and do all other matters and things that are required of me in this hearing to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr Avadia.
My name's Edward Avadia, I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff to the Premier and the Policy Director. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms Michael.
My name is Sarah Michael. I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff to the New South Wales Premier, Chris Minns, as well as the Director of Media and Communications. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Right, thank you very much. Now, before we start, we have two distinct offices represented here, the Premier's Office and the Office of the Police Minister. Okay, apparently, Mr Nielsen and Mr Cullen, you both have inadvertently read the wrong affirmations that may have been provided inadvertently, so...
That's a good point.
We'll make sure we get you sworn incorrectly.
We just read out what was provided, Chair.
No, certainly, and apparently our error, Mr Cullen, not yours. Now, Mr Nelson.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr Cullen.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, that sounds much better, much more familiar. Right, going back to where I was, we have two distinct offices, both the Premier's Office and the Police Minister's Office. Would you, Mr Nielsen, as the Chief of Staff, like to make an opening statement at all on behalf of yourself and Ms South?
No, thank you.
You're under no obligation to do so, I just wanted to provide that opportunity in fairness.
Thank you.
Mr Cullen, on behalf of your team?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. In that case, we'll go straight into questioning and I'm going to ask the Honourable Susan Carter to open the questioning.
Thank you, thank you all for finally being here. Dr South, if I could start with you. Did you already have a Signal group set up when the summons were served on you to attend on the 20th of June?
I don't actually recall, I'm sorry. We've been in Parliament for the last two weeks, so we've been talking in person.
So, what was the first thing you did when the summons were served on you?
We met with each other.
And so who's we?
Myself and the other four witnesses here today.
And who else?
That was all at the time.
At the time, and then who did you discuss it with later?
As has been discussed before, we received advice on the matter as well.
Sorry, the process of receiving advice. So, the four of you met, how long after you got the summons did the four of you meet?
We met at the time of the summons because we issued the summons together.
Okay, that was in person, and then how did subsequent communication about the summons take place?
In a variety of methods.
Could you list those manners for me, please?
In the office, in person.
Yes.
Over Teams.
So you had Teams meetings about it?
Correct.
Yes, and...
Via the phone.
Phone, and did you talk in person or did you use Signal or WhatsApp?
We talked in person and we also sent messages to each other.
What, sending messages using...
A variety of different messaging services.
What are those messaging services that you used?
We used, well, I've text messaged before. I've also used other applications as well.
Which are those?
We've used a variety of messaging applications.
Which are those?
I use Signal, I've used WhatsApp before, I've used a variety.
And you've used Signal, I don't mean ever in your life, but in order to communicate with the people in relation to the summons?
I would say the majority of our communication has been in person.
And the balance of the communication?
I couldn't tell you, I'm sorry.
Is it common that you could serve with the summons, Dr South?
No, I've never been served with the summons before.
So why is it then that you can't remember how you've communicated with people about receiving something as a once-in-a-lifetime experience of a summons?
Well, I can remember, I did tell you that that communication happened in a variety of manners.
And I'm exploring all the variety of manners, and I'm surprised that you cannot recall. How long ago did you get the summons?
It was a few weeks ago. I'm so sorry, I actually don't know the date that we were served the summons, but I will take a look at the paperwork.
So you can't recall which methods of communication you used to discuss a once-in-a-lifetime event that happened a couple of weeks ago?
No, I can recall, I did tell you that we met in person, we spoke over the phone, we met on Teams.
Teams, and so are you telling me that you didn't exchange any messages using applications in relation to this summons?
I said that we did.
And which applications did you use?
I said I didn't recall the balance of that. I also did answer your question before.
Which applications did you use to discuss the summons?
I answered that question previously.
Well, perhaps you could answer it again because your answer wasn't clear the first time.
I said that I've used a variety of messaging applications. I said that I've used Signal, I've used WhatsApp, I've used text messages.
In relation to the summons?
Look, I would have to take that on notice.
Thank you, that'd be great if you could take that on notice, I'd appreciate that.
Just to correct myself, we received the summons on Tuesday, the 17th of June, but I think it, and I'd have to defer to my colleagues, I think we maybe received it that day or the next day.
So, after you received the summons, you discuss it with your colleagues, and then you said that you received advice. Who was part of the conversation in relation to getting advice?
I'd have to take that on notice because I'm not sure if that's covered by legal professional privilege.
So, why would a conversation about whether to get advice be covered by legal professional privilege?
I'm saying I'd have to take that on notice, I'm very sorry. I'm not sure if the advice and how we sort it is covered by legal professional privilege.
When did you first speak to Mr Minns about this issue?
I don't recall speaking directly to the Premier about this issue. My job is as Deputy Chief of Staff to the Minister for Police and Counterterrorism.
When did you first speak to Minister Catley about this?
I spoke to Minister Catley on the evening that the caravan was found.
Not about the summons?
Oh, about the summons, I'm so sorry. I thought we were talking about the incident now. About the summons, it would have been at the time we received it because we received it in the office.
Okay, so you spoke, so are you in the same office as the other four people who are here as witnesses?
Do you mean, do we physically work in the same office?
Yes.
We work in the same office building.
Okay, so what you've just told me is that immediately upon getting the summons, you spoke to the other four witnesses at the table, and then I'm hearing that you spoke to Minister Catley. So were you all physically present in the same place?
No.
So how did the conversation with Minister Catley occur?
I'm being truthful here, I honestly don't recall, but we would have just gone back to the office, our physical office, which is in the same building.
Okay, so Mr Minns has reported in the Daily Telegraph of the 26th of June and on Newsweek of the 25th of June, saying, "I'm offering the staff support as an employer." So have you been offered support by Mr Minns?
We have been offered legal support as part of this process. Obviously, being issued with the summons is a serious matter.
And how did, so the support being offered by Mr Minns, how did that come about? What was the line of communication so you knew that support was available?
That was through the Premier's Chief of Staff, who is at this table.
So, Mr Cullen spoke to you. Mr Cullen, how has the Premier been supporting you as an employer?
I think many forms, but I think it might serve the purpose of the Committee. If you could actually, rather than just taking out a few words, could you read the full paragraph?
Mr Cullen, I think I'm asking the question here. How has the Premier offered you support as an employer?
I just think the context is actually really important here. Because there's been a lot said about this in the last few weeks.
How has the Premier offered you support as an employer?
Look, I think...
Look, you can fight with the question, you can answer it, what would you like to do?
I think it would be fair to say that the Premier has been extremely supportive. His comments are clearly on the public record in the Parliament and...
So you believe that he supports you by calling us a star team?
Hang on, before you say, Mr Cullen, I know what you're going to say. Please allow the witness to finish his answer before asking the next question.
Thank you. So, he's made strong comments on the record about his view about ministerial staff attending and being in this situation. So, I've got to say, I personally regard that as being extremely supportive. Our views about our attendance have been made clear. You've received submissions from us, which the Committee's obviously gone on to table, which we appreciate, which that represents the view and the position of the five of us. So, he's been extremely supportive at every juncture.
So, when you spoke to Dr South about legal support, what was the conversation you had had with the Premier prior to that?
I don't think there would have been, I think, I think it's... I think I'd be right in saying that I wouldn't have had a conversation with the Premier regarding legal advice.
So, how were you...
Just to be really clear, just to be really clear, the Committee has called us. We've gone through a process over a period of weeks. We have conferred, obviously, particularly in relation to advice responding to the summons and then responding to other matters this week. But they are options and advice open to staff and things that we've explored ourselves.
So, you were not offering Dr South support from the Premier in the form of legal advice? You were offering that to her as something available to all staff members?
Mr Chair, this is why I asked the question about the context of the comments that the Premier made. I think you're reading into his comments more than what he was talking about, but I see those as separate issues. He made a clear position about what he thought about ministerial staff appearing to this inquiry. We have got our own views and our own thoughts, which we've carried out, including seeking advice over the course of the last few weeks.
And so you sought that advice in your personal capacity?
Well, I suppose in my capacity as the Chief of Staff to the Premier, as a member of ministerial staff and availing myself of options that we've got available to us under, I suppose, under relevant, what would you say? Under relevant codes and relevant procedures that pertain to ministerial staff in this kind of situation.
So, who paid for the legal advice?
There's a scheme, which I think has got, I think there was some information provided to the Upper House yesterday regarding that, an illegal assistance, ex gratia assistance programme, which is administered by the Department of Communities and Justice. So ultimately, my understanding is that the costs will be met via that.
And when did you first approach the Department of Community and Justice seeking that ex gratia?
Let me take it on notice for the actual date. It would have been, so I think Ms Tilly was saying that we were summoned on the Tuesday, the 17th of June. It would have been close proximity to that.
And what is the hourly rate you were paying for that advice?
Let me take that on notice and certainly happy to come back to the Committee on the question of legal costs as well when we've got them. At the moment, I don't have the final costs.
And can you confirm that you followed the Attorney General's rates for legal representation and achieved an agreement with the person providing legal advice about rates before those instructions were given?
I believe so, but let me just take that on notice just to triple check.
Dr South, the letter of the 19th of June that has your signature, what input did you have into that letter?
Sorry, let me just take the letter out for my own reference. So, on the drafting of this letter, all five of us were engaged in the drafting and we were all asked to check the letter and make sure that it was an accurate reflection.
You were asked by whom?
By both our legal counsel and the other five people sitting, four people sitting here at this table.
So who was the legal counsel who drafted this?
I'm unsure if I can say the names of the...
The name of legal counsel is not subject to privilege.
Well, I understand that Mr Cullen's going to provide the costs anyway.
Dr South, I'm asking you a question. Who was your legal adviser in this matter?
I was about to answer your question.
Thank you.
As I understand that Mr Cullen is going, Cullen is going to provide the costs anyway, it was Minter Ellison.
And who at Minter Ellison?
It was a partner at Minter Ellison.
And the name of the partner?
It was Kate Plowman.
And how often did you meet with Ms Plowman?
I'd have to take that on notice, I'm sorry.
If you could take that on notice. Mr Nielsen, did you get legal advice from the same source?
Yes.
Mr Cullen, did you get legal advice from the same source?
I did.
Mr Avadia?
Yeah.
And Ms Michael?
Yes.
And which paragraph of the letter did you change, Dr South?
I don't think that I changed any paragraph of the letter, I think that I checked it for accuracy.
Okay, Mr Nielsen?
I made some notes on the draft and we discussed those with the lawyers and all of our input was sought and filed it into the final draft that went.
Okay, and on how many occasions did you meet with the lawyers at Minter Ellison, Mr Nielsen?
A number I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Can you take that on notice and provide those details?
Yeah, I'm sure they know, yeah.
Mr Cullen, same question to you?
Yeah, no, I concur with that. A number of times, a number of times over the last few weeks and happy to take that on notice and come back to you with an accurate number.
Thank you. And Ms Michaels, how did you decide to engage Kate Plowman at Minter Ellison for legal services?
Just as the others have said, we threw the assistance programme that was offered to us, but it was mainly done through James, so he represented our office. And, you know, obviously we met with the lawyers a few times. But yeah, nothing more to add than what the others have said.
But did you decide to engage...
Of course, yeah. I mean, there was no, I understood exactly what was happening. I made an active decision in this process, yes.
And you decided that Ms Plowman was the best person to represent your interests?
Yes.
And how did you know about Ms Plowman?
Again, through this programme.
So, what, Ms Plowman is listed on a list of solicitors on an ex gratia payments programme in DCJ?
Perhaps this might be best directed through my Chief of Staff because he was the one that did the engagement.
So you didn't make an independent decision, it was done, Mr Cullen was your agent in this matter?
No, he wasn't, but as my boss, he discussed our options and I accepted that he acted for me, so... In representing, in those representations.
Did you initially have a different view to your boss?
No, not at all.
So you've always had exactly the same view as your boss?
In this case, yes.
And did you feel free to come to a different decision than that of your boss?
I absolutely did.
Okay, but you didn't question it at all?
Obviously, I thought about my options. This is not something that we take lightly. We are staffers, where our jobs are to support the politicians, not to be the face of things. And receiving something like this, it's nerve-wracking, it's daunting. But ultimately, I felt like this was the path that, you know, I thought was right. And yes, I agreed with it.
So you thought it was right to disobey the law?
No, it wasn't disobeyed.
Chair, I'd just suggest that that's not a, that's not a fair question or a courteous question to the witness under paragraph 19 of the procedural fairness resolution. It's an assertion that's been made. It's an assertion, it's an assertion that's been made, Chair, and I'd suggest it's discourteous to the witness.
It may feel like it's not appropriate, but it's an entirely appropriate question. There was no, it's a matter of fact and it's asking for the witness's state of mind in relation to a factual matter.
Further to the point of order, Chair. The witnesses, the witnesses have said they've received advice and I would suggest that perhaps the advice is contrary to the position of the Legislative Council to suggest they've broken the law, Chair, I think is unfair.
I've heard enough on all sides, I'm going to rule, there is no point of order, continue with the question.
Okay, could you answer the question, Ms Michael?
Do you mind repeating it?
You were untroubled by breaking the law?
It wasn't a, we're breaking the law here, it was, we just need to get more advice about what our rights were.
So you had received a lawful direction, you had received a summons, and you thought that you could decide whether that was, you had to follow that law or not?
No, I think that's the reason why we got advice.
So do you always get advice about whether a law is valid or not before you follow it?
In this particular instance, I like to think of myself as a law-abiding citizen, so in this instance, yes. I did receive advice, I thought that was the right course of action.
Mr Nielsen, are you in the habit of seeking advice about whether you need to follow laws or not?
As you would be aware, we wrote to the Committee and outlined in detail why we believed we had reasonable excuse or, what's the phrase? Just cause to not appear. And there was a very detailed argument that we expanded. We didn't get any detailed response to any of those points. And so, yeah, we felt that, and our advice was, that we had just cause not to come. So therefore, it wasn't illegal.
So, could you just restate your job title again, Mr Nielsen?
I'm Chief of Staff to the Police Minister.
And you, in that capacity, give advice to the Police Minister?
Yeah, quite often.
And do you advise her that it is appropriate for people when, to question whether they have to follow a particular law or not?
No, I never advised her that.
So, but you think it's okay for you to question whether you have to follow a particular law or not?
We had advice that we had just cause or reasonable excuse not to attend and therefore we wouldn't be breaking the law.
What was your thought process that in the first place you go, "Here is a law I have to follow, oh, I'll get advice to see whether this one actually applies to me"?
That's not my thought process at all.
Then why did you seek advice about whether you needed to obey a law?
Because we felt we had just cause or reasonable excuse not to attend.
So therefore, you thought this law didn't apply to you? Is that what you're telling me?
I thought we weren't in breach of the law by not attending.
Why?
Because we had just cause or reasonable excuse.
Because this law didn't apply to you?
This is the third time you've said that to me, so we're not getting far.
Thank you.
Ms Sue Higginson?
Thank you, thank you very much everyone for attending. Mr Cullen, can I just ask you, so you received the summons on the 17th of June? Is that correct?
Look, I take, I take Ms South's advice that that's the right date. I mean, the Secretariat's probably better advised about when, here and now, I don't obviously have access to my emails, but I take it to the word that that's when the summons was received, yeah.
Just to assist you, Mr Cullen, I think earlier you may have said that I'll take that on notice.
Sure.
And you're still entitled to do so.
Yeah.
So, when you received the summons, whatever time or date that was, did you know that it would be a contempt to not follow a summons?
Look, I think you're inviting me to comment on, like with respect, on what is quite a vexed issue. There's a couple of layers to this. Although I'm happy to go into a fair bit of detail on this, Mr Chair, but I've got to say, my sense is, we've been called here to answer questions regarding the Dural caravan incident. I can, we can spend an hour Q and A on the summons and the arrests, that's fine. I'm just saying that I think we've got a bit of time to get through the issues. I think that's what would be in everyone's best interest. But to go to your question, there's a couple of layers to this. There's the circumstances of this inquiry, there's the way it was constituted, there was the amendments to the terms of reference, there was the Legislative Assembly, the establishment of a Privileges Committee, there was effectively a disagreement between the Houses, there was matters of privilege which the Premier raised, which was endorsed by the Speaker. There was a response from the LC and then a decision was made to amend terms of reference. So there was exclusive cognizant issues which pertain to this specific inquiry. So that's the first point in relation to ministerial staff appearing at this particular inquiry. Then we move on to, I think more generally, some vexed issues around ministerial staff being called to attend. I've, this is, you're probably aware, not the first inquiry that I've been to. I've been to another one late last year and in doing so, I've outlined at various junctures my concerns with being called. And in the case of the previous inquiry, I was compelled to attend and then attended. But I have, you know, I have put on the record clearly then and I think we have clearly again today about the concerns we've got about ministerial staff being called. And then there is effectively a test, albeit limited, under the Parliamentary Evidence Act that we've, we decided to avail ourselves of. And fast forward and here we are answering all questions.
Mr Cullen, when you received the summons, did you know it was a contempt to not comply with the summons?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I would agree. I just, I'm not sure I would agree. Again, I would, I would bring you back to the, I would bring you back to the Parliamentary Evidence Act. And there's a provision in the Parliamentary Evidence Act that we would, well, sorry, we certainly did argue that would give us that terminology, reasonable and just cause not to attend. So, I think the idea that somehow ignoring, I think it is allowed for, albeit in some limited means in the Parliamentary Evidence Act for us not to attend. So, that would be my response on the contempt issue.
Did you discuss this and this view with the Premier?
It probably came up. I mean, I think it would be fair to characterize, the Premier's and certainly my engagement with the Premier on these issues were probably more confined to it being a matter of public controversy of some sort, particularly this week about, because clearly it was a question that was coming up and he was being asked about. So that was probably the conversation I was having. And less so, just to finish, less so having a conversation with the Premier about what actions we were taking as members of staff in terms of receiving advice, responding to various invitations, then a summons, then a follow-up and then into this week. That was, I would call that, that's quite separate and that was actions that we took.
Did the Premier, as your employer, at any point in time instruct you to comply with the summons?
Absolutely not.
Sorry, sorry.
You might have heard the question, Mr Cullen.
Sorry, I'll let you finish that, sorry.
Did the Premier at any time ask or instruct you to comply with the summons that had been issued to you and the other staff?
Look, I would just point you to what the Premier, the Premier has put on the view...
Thank you, Mr Cullen. Thank you very much. But can I ask you to just answer this question? Did the Premier instruct you to comply with the summons at... Did the Premier instruct you to comply with the summons at any time?
I don't think I had a conversation like that at all. I think I'd point you to what the Premier has said on the record about his view about our attendance here. Uh, and we have, as, as we've been at pains in writing and again this morning, have provided you with some information about what our view is about our attendance here. So these are decisions that we've made and we endorse, and there was absolutely no formal or informal direction from the Premier, I must be really clear about that.
Thank you. So for clarity?
Yeah.
Um, the Premier at no time instructed you or suggested to you to comply with the summons?
I, it's, the, these, these were not matters for the Premier, the, the matters of our attendance to this committee were matters for us.
Sorry, but, Mr. Cullen, you're suggesting that we should refer to the Premier's comments in the public and the media about this?
Sure.
But you're now suggesting that that was not a matter for your attendance or non-attendance was not a matter for the Premier? Which one is it?
He's a, he's a, he's a public figure, and, and these questions were getting raised publicly, and he's put his view on the record. But I've got to say, while that was happening, we were going through our own processes and having our own conversations about what we were prepared to do, and where, how we were prepared to respond to the invitations and then the summons from this committee. Uh, and again, here we are to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cullen, did, what it, do you, what's your main form of communication between you and the Premier?
Probably the old fashioned walk into each other's office or, um, if we're not within proximity, uh, on the phone.
Um, as in voice calls?
Yeah.
And do you use any particular other form of communication, messaging apps and so forth?
Um, yeah, I think, I think on occasion, again, your, your question's sort of more specifically about engagement with the Premier. Yeah, I think on, uh, on occasion we would on probably, uh, maybe the odd text message.
Yep.
Uh, possibly, uh, other apps as well, yeah.
Um, and so on a, um, so on a normal day, a non-parliamentary sitting day, how much communication do you have with the Premier as his Chief of Staff?
Yeah, look, it's significant. Um, I think if it was a, a, a non-parliamentary day where, um, for example, we had a Cabinet meeting on, um, we would be, and then potentially other subcommittees of Cabinet and other meetings, stakeholder meetings, we would be talking a, a reasonable amount. And if we, um, for whatever reason the Premier was travelling, we would, um, yeah, it would, it wouldn't be unusual for us to be, um, having five or six phone calls a day, quite regular, I would, I would sort of suggest in this day and age.
And when you're sharing documents or quick material with the Premier, what form do you, what's your quickest way and most common way of providing him something he needs to see urgently?
Yeah, prob, probably via app, but I've got to say, it would be pretty, pretty infrequent.
I'd like to take a point of order, and I have been resisting, but I, I do fail to see how this line of questioning is relevant to the terms of reference of this inquiry. The, the logistical operations of the Premier's office, the relationship between the Premier and the Chief of Staff, the manner of their communication is not relevant to the terms of reference with respect to, um, the caravan incident and its related matters.
Thank you. To the point of order, Chair, this is entirely relevant, I'm actually about to get to, um, the questions around who knew what and how, at what particular times in relation to the Dural Incident, it's clearly in order.
Perhaps I maybe can just ask that question.
To the point of order, it's not for the government to tell me how to ask my questions.
Order, order.
Thank you, Chair.
You're quite correct, Miss Higginson, it's not for you to make any rulings or directions, Mr. Neva, it's up to me.
Um, if you could, sorry.
I haven't finished my ruling.
Apologies.
Line of questioning around the summoning issue and how we ended up here today is relevant to this inquiry. I do agree though, that going deeply into the methods of communication between the Chief of Staff and the Premier on matters not related to this particular point may well be a bridge too far. So, Miss Higginson, if you can concentrate your questions, albeit on methods of communication strictly to this matter that we're dealing with.
Thank you. Um, and what app was that, is that, Mr. Cullen?
Can you, so what was the, so?
Uh, when you're sharing materials and when you have to provide.
I'll just go back to your ruling, Chair, are we talking about how we communicate in general, are we talking about the Dural Caravan incident? What are we, what are we talking about?
Um, if I can, I would like to, um, uh, make it clear that the two points of interest are naturally, uh, the, um, in relation to the summons and in relation to the Dural Caravan incident, which I'm about to come to. But if we could just, at this point, um, answer the question about.
Yeah.
So are, are you suggesting that there are various apps that you would use at various different times for various different purposes? If so, I'm happy to try and accommodate your answers for you in my questions.
Just in terms of your ruling, and the, the member now flouting your ruling, uh, which was around the general nature of communications, um, which are outside the terms of reference for the inquiry, which specifically relates to the Dural Caravan incident, and as, as you have ruled, matters relating to the summons. The, uh, the member has yet to mention either of those things in her question, um, in, in terms of how she's put it in the first time and how she's rephrased it. So I'd ask you to call it a ward.
All right, no, I don't need any more, I'm going to rule. Miss Higginson is in order, and the question stands, because she did talk about the Dural Caravan incident in that line of questioning just then. So continue on, Miss Higginson.
So, um, clearly, in terms of that particular subject matter, and, um, as is the evidence already before this committee, the potential, uh, almost national, oh, the national security, uh, a live terrorism investigation, I mean, communication like that, um, to the best of my recollection was, um, if not in person, uh, over the telephone.
Over the telephone, so are you saying there were no messaging apps used for the purpose of discussing between you and the Premier the Dural Caravan incident? Over the few weeks it was, it was a live issue, publicly and privately?
That's my recollection, yes.
None whatsoever?
No, no, sorry, what I'm saying is, I, uh, reiterate my answer, that the communication was, for that particular incident, was, uh, absolutely in-person conversations and over the phone.
Um, so no.
And not, and not messaging, no, not, I mean, given that subject matter, no.
None at all?
Well, look, I'm happy to take it on notice to check just for the, the fullness of, of, um, checking. But, uh, yeah, my strong recollection is that that was, uh, I was doing it over the phone in person.
Thank you. And then for the purpose of the summons and the issue of the summons, did you use any messages between yourself and the Premier and may have shared any documents, including the summons or anything like that?
No, uh, no, it would have been, again, uh, would have been the context of, um, uh, daily conversation. Um, subject matter was, as, as I've already alluded to, was coming up routinely, certainly early this week, um, publicly. So we would have a conversation in that context in terms of, um, his public commentary. Uh, but otherwise, um, no, no sharing of documents or advice or, um, him having a role or input into any of those.
Um, in relation to when it had become quite clear, or, sorry, that's probably not the best word, when it was becoming clear, uh, through communications of the Deputy Police Commissioner Hudson, um, and through those briefings, that he had clearly formed a view, sorry, he had formed a view that the Dural Caravan incident related to a criminal, an opportunistic criminal enterprise, more so than motivated by antisemitism and acts of hatred. Um, at what point did you feel, if you did, um, some form of relief that it wasn't motivated by that hatred?
So you're asking me for my thoughts and feelings?
Uh, no, I'm asking when, um, you became aware that it was not an act of terrorism or vile antisemitism, and that this was more. I know the federal police have used criminal hoax, and I know that's a bit, a con job, sorry, and I know that's a bit loaded, I don't want to use that term. But when you realised this was more of a criminal mind, criminal opportunity, when did that happen for you?
I would have to, um, I would have to sort of point you to the chronology, and I think there's probably been a few chronologies before this committee over the course of your earlier hearings, but, um, including the briefings that we were receiving from police. Um, I think, um, to be clear, early on, and it was flagged in the Deputy Commissioner's public comments at the press conference with the Premier on the twenty-ninth of January, it was covered in, uh, certainly in, uh, print media the following day, and reiterated again, if you like, by the Deputy Commissioner the next day on two GB Fordham, that there were alternative lines of inquiry. Um, in terms of like the, the police investigation, um, I've got to be really careful here because, look, I, I really, level of comfortability, this is something which was led by the police, um, and I'm not a police investigator. Um, so according to the timeline, um, and again, I think this information's all before the committee as well, but, um, it, it, where, where effectively there was a finalised view from police, um, was when I think the AFP source was discredited on the twenty-first of February. And then, um, I recall, um, after, I think, it would have been New South Wales Police got legal advice, um, confirming they at that point couldn't pursue terrorism charges, uh, charges for a terrorism offence. Um, that after, after, not long after that, um, getting, uh, might have been, might have been Mr. Nielsen letting me know that, um, police had contacted Minister Minister or the Minister's Office, that that had been the case, and that was at an end. And then I suppose then the next step was, which we, which we all have seen, the, uh, press conference with the AFP and New South Wales Police on the tenth of March outlining the results of, uh, their investigation at that point. So there was a pretty clear, steady chronology, and I think that, um, yeah.
Um, as the, um, on the twenty-ninth of January, as you've identified, Deputy Commissioner Hudson had made it clear on the twenty-ninth of, um, January that, um, you know, there could be multiple, there could be other reasons for the motivation of the Dural Caravan.
Hmm.
Um, were you, um, who provided the Premier with the media lines? There is only one way of calling it out, and that is terrorism. Do you recall?
Um, look, no, but the Premier is very much capable of coming up with his own lines, to use your word. I think I would point to you, I mean, I, I can understand the interest in the word terrorism, particularly at the press conference on the twenty-ninth of January. I think it's the evidence before you with respect that the reason that language was being used in that press conference was because it was exactly the language and the briefing that police provided the Premier, uh, in the lead-up to the press conference on the twenty-ninth of January. So that's where that came up, and I know that you've, obviously, you've interrogated quite rightly, Mr. Hudson, about where, why the Premier would have used that term and in, in what context, and then he's provided you with evidence, I won't go back over it. But he's got, he's given you extensive information on that. So, um, that's basically, you know, obviously the, the Premier took a view based on the advice he had from police at that time. Uh, and hence the, um, the update that he gave on the twenty-ninth of January. Just, I think everyone just, you're just, just remember, that wasn't, that wasn't the government, the Premier and police basically breaking news, there was a leaked story, uh, fair enough, good journalism in the Daily Telegraph. And I think the Premier took the view that that couldn't go without some sort of context, and so the press conference happened.
Um, just in relation to that, Mr. Cullen, do you know who leaked the, um, story to the Daily Tally?
I don't.
Do you have any, um, suspicions that you would like to share with the committee?
No, I don't.
What's your point of order?
The question's been put and answered.
Yes, he's fine, Mr. Donnelly, he's fine.
I would have ruled that the question was in order.
Yeah.
She's, uh, asking for an opinion from the witness. We are not in the chamber, the rules of questions in question time don't apply in here. And, and this is a very experienced and, uh, educated witness, and he will answer as he sees fit. Anyway, the question's been put and answered anyway, let's move on.
Um, can I just ask as well, Mr. Cullen, um, just going back to the issue of the summons, the issuing of the summons, um, did it concern you? I, I, I still can't, I think your answer is, you thought it was a contempt possibly, but you were questioning whether it was or not. A breach of, you know, to disobey a summons, but you were willing to take, test that, is that fair, a fair summary of your evidence?
No, it's not how I'd characterize it.
Okay.
And, and I wouldn't, and I wa, and I wouldn't have thought of, and I, and I wouldn't use, and I probably still wouldn't use a word like contempt. But, uh, I certainly thought of the invitation and then later the summons, um, uh, in a way in terms of whether or not, um, it was appropriate. I mean, as you can imagine in my position, having sort of closely followed, um, the establishment, um, of this particular inquiry, again, the debates in the upper house and the lower house, um, views that have been put on the record, uh, certainly correspondence entered into, privilege issue from the Premier, the view of the Speaker. Um, I think with respect, there's other views in the community, including from, um, very, much more experienced constitutional minds than mine or other people here, that there are potential arguments around the Parliamentary Evidence Act, um, and its, uh, constitutional validity. But again, I'll just bring you back to the operation of the Parliamentary Evidence Act, uh, and that there is, it does envisage some circumstances where at, uh, you know, a, a witness may take, or potential witness may take the view that it's not appropriate they attend. And, uh, we're availing ourselves of that, uh, and basically, uh, you know, providing you with the information about why we thought we had a just and reasonable excuse not to attend.
Did you think at all, or were you advised at all, or was there a discussion at all, that the ordinary course, if you're going to disobey a law, is to challenge that law? And was there any consideration about seeking the normal thing that a person would do, and that is challenge, legally challenge, rather than just not obey and write a letter saying you shouldn't obey a summons?
Sorry, sorry, do you mind just asking that again? There was just, there was a few concepts there.
Was there any discussion or consideration
Yep.
about taking the ordinary course if you are going to challenge a summons, which would be to seek to have that summons set aside, or rather than just say, this law doesn't apply to us? Um, or, or, you know, was there any discussion about that, any advice received about that?
Having a summons set aside, no, look, I think we, I think really, um, I think, uh, no, I think it was really, this was the, the course that we set upon, uh, to use your words, was responding to the committee in the forms we did, outlining the arguments in the, the way we did, um, that was strongly held view, it probably still is, and, um, yeah, and here we are.
Sorry, can I just, so you think that you, the strongly held view is that you shouldn't be here, or that you don't need to comply with that summons?
I've, I've got a strong view, but, um, again, as, you know, the last few days, um, with, with respect to the, uh, upper house and with respect to the President, when it is put to me, uh, members of my staff, uh, to members of the Minister for Police's staff, that not only, uh, could you be arrested, that you could be jailed, and potentially, um, potentially held over, potentially nights, given the fact that the Legislative Council in the, in the context of this week was sitting, and it, and it may well be difficult to have convened, um, a meeting of this committee. Um, that was, um, that was a bit different to, um, that was, to be frank, quite extraordinary. So, um, that did concentrate the mind, and, uh, again, here we are.
Sorry, so are you saying now that you believe the law is, shouldn't apply to you in this way, and the other people here?
Look, I, I feel like we're going over old ground. There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a test in the Parliamentary Evidence Act, there's lots of views out there, um, you've seen the advice of Mr. Walker. Uh, Ms. Toomey's put some, um, advi- advices over a period of time on the record about this particular piece of legislation, which in some ways is actually a very old statute, but hasn't very, hasn't really been tested much. Um, we've got well-held views, we obviously changed our mind and we're here.
So you're here.
Miss Higginson?
Yeah.
I'm going to come back to you.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair.
I'm going to share the question, Mr. Rudding, do you have any other?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to start by thanking the five of you for turning up today. I suspect it has been a somewhat personally stressful episode. Uh, our preference would have been that your, that the Premier and the Policeman were here, but you are here and we're grateful for it. And I also, uh, I don't care about the politics of the summons. Uh, we're almost a third of the way through this inquiry, we've got a limited amount of time. I do care about the guts of the matter, the heart of the matter. So, Mr. Cullen, I have a, my, my, I'll address my question to you. On the nineteenth of January, the caravan was found. On the twenty-ninth of January, the caravan was made pub. The nineteenth of January.
Is that right? Is that right? Sorry, sorry, Mr. Rudding.
Yeah. On the twenty-ninth of January, the caravan was made public, as, as you've just said now, then on the twentieth of February, twenty-one days later, uh, legislation was introduced, uh, to this Parliament. Now, on that, on the, during that parliamentary debate, uh, the Honourable Anthony D. Adams, uh, MOC spoke. Now, I'm, I'm guessing you've known him for many years, and you would accept that Anthony D. Adam is a, um, an intelligent guy. We agree with that.
Is that a question?
That is a question, yes.
Um, Mr. Anthony D. Adam is a member of. Um, Mr. Anthony D. Adams is a member of the upper house and a member of the government. He's entitled to his views. I'll let you continue.
Well, I would like to quote, uh, a paragraph from what he told the Parliament on the day that the bill was partied. Anthony D. Adams said, "I am also troubled by the factual basis for the legislation coming before the Parliament. There have been a number of instances of purported antisemitism. As far as I'm aware, most of those incidences may have given rise to charges, but none of, none of them gone through the court process. None of the facts have been established beyond reasonable doubt. While we might assert that those people have done those things on the basis of antisemitic sentiment, that is yet to be established. I cite the example of the explosives in the caravan. The Sydney Morning Herald has done a great service by not being taken along with the consensus rhetoric that seemed to be flowing through the media, but actually delving into the specifics of the case. It seemed that it was a ploy by organised crime to try to negotiate a reduction in sentence." End quote. Now, so this is, um, a member of your government quoting the Sydney Morning Herald, a very respected newspaper in this state, and they are both suggesting that there was already serious suggestions that this caravan incident was a ploy. So was there any discussion at that time, uh, that maybe we should pause this legislation? That we wouldn't want to bring in a suite of anti-free speech laws if it was because of a ploy?
So, Mr. Chair, there's a lot there. Um, that's a long question. It's a lot of one-word answer.
But, and you don't have to answer in one word, Mr. Cullen.
Thank you very much.
Your answer? You give it as you see fit.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Ruddick, thank you for the question. Look, I, I think, um, there's a lot to it. I probably should have been taking some more notes as you went. Um, the, um, the, the point about the three pieces of legislation, which I suppose in some ways is actually before this committee, uh, and the circumstances and the information presented upon which Parliament considered to, um, debate and to pass those. I, I think we've got to be really careful and really clear here about the timeline. You've received advice, including from the Cabinet Office. Um, the Premier, specifically the Premier, but also the government more broadly, had flagged publicly, uh, on, in the instance of each of the three pieces of legislation, the anti-protest laws relating to religious places of worship, the, effectively the criminalising of ninety-three Zed, and then the swastika, um, the, uh, like the enhanced penalties for, for those offences. They had been flagged by the Premier in one way or another prior to Mr. Thurtel calling the Premier in relation to, um, a terrorism investigation, a JCTT investigation into the dual caravan incident on the twentieth of January. So I think that's really important. Um, those three pieces of legislation were not, at any point that I'm aware of, put forward by, uh, by the Premier as, um, reasons to support. So the dual incident wasn't put forward as a reason to support those three pieces of legislation. In fact, those three pieces of legislation had been worked on for various periods of time, but certainly have followed through effectively the twelve or eighteen months' worth of life in Sydney, which included a rise in antisemitism. Uh, and in the, again, the evidence before you, the Operation Shelter, uh, threw, investigated at least three hundred and sixty-seven incidents of antisemitism. And I'm sure there's been many more, um, unreported, uh, instances of antisemitism as well. So that's actually the context in which legislation was flagged publicly and then, um, came through the Parliament. Um, and the other thing I'd make out really clearly is that, that the three pieces of legislation there, none of them relate to alleged terrorism offences. They are unrelated. I do accept that they, they are broadly in the umbrella of dealing, amongst other things, with community harmony and antisemitism. But I think the relationship, um, that's been constructed by some between the dual caravan event and, um, the, uh, the, those three, the passage of those three pieces of legislation, uh, I think is extremely unfortunate, uh, and unfair. And I would be pointing you towards the second reading speeches, uh, of the, of those three pieces of legislation. Um, that's really about the, um, the intent and why the government has moved forward on, on the three pieces of legislation. And to give you credit, Mr. Ruddick, you've actually, you do have concerns, which I accept are well-held, and you've actually tabled and introduced into the upper house, a piece of legislation that repeals my understanding is all three pieces of legislation. So I think for people who are, for, you know, if people think that they were duped, I would extremely disagree and think that's extremely unfair. But if there are people in the Parliament who think that that's the case, then they should be supporting your legislation.
Thank you. Um, now, we did hear our first hearing from Deputy Commissioner Hudson. I asked him, uh, so that they've accepted that the caravan incident was a criminal con job. Uh, we all know that over the summer, there was an alarming, uh, rise in, you know, we'd turn on the six o'clock news every night, you know, every two or three days, there's a synagogue being burned, there's a car bomb being, going off, lots of graffiti. Uh, but I asked the Deputy Commissioner how many of these incidences were related to the same, same criminal con job.
Yep.
And without, without a blink, he said fourteen.
Yep.
So it sounds like, I mean, so the, this legislation, you're, given your last answer, it sounds like you're saying, well, the caravan incident wasn't primarily responsible for these, for this legislation. But I think, I suspect, would you think it would be fair to say that that whole, that whole range of incidents, which we now accept as a criminal con job?
Hmm.
Do you think that was part of it? Because since, since this all blew up, since the caravan has been exposed, there hasn't been any of these incidences, which is good news. But it does prove that it was a criminal con job and not an outbreak over antisemitism in this state.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Ruddick, there's a bit there to comment on too. I, I, I think in response, I would say that, I'm not going to agree with you on, on, on uses of some of that language, like hoax, criminal. I know, I know that you said hoax, but you said criminal con job.
Well, that's what the federal police said.
Well, I think that, to be fair to Mr. Hudson, and he, he was at pains to say, and, and he has done a lot of outreach with the Jewish community in the last twelve to eighteen months, that, um, you know, so I think some of that language is extremely unfortunate because I think the impact and the terror and fear caused, particularly, uh, in the last twelve to eighteen months in the Jewish community has been real. It has been palpable. Um, and we can spend our time talking about the motivation of certain actions, but you can't tell me that a firebomb or graffiti of, um, a synagogue is an antisemitic. These are antisemitic acts and we can talk about, a motivation is important for the purpose of what someone is being charged with. But those things did instill fear, uh, into the community more broadly and into the Jewish community. So I think that's the first point, which is really important. Sorry, Mr. Ruddick, you were talking about, um, the relationship between the dual incident and the fourteen events. Um, that's right. I mean, and some of those events were, were violent, were firebombing. I mean, we could have had someone seriously maimed or killed. And I'm not sure they would have cared about the motivation. I mean, they, that would have been a terrible thing and it's clearly an antisemitic event. But let's be clear, we're talking about fourteen events, uh, out of three hundred and sixty-seven, um, which Operation Shelter, at least three hundred and sixty-seven, which the police forces, uh, Operation Selta were investigating. So I think the broader context is really important, that there was a, an unfortunate continuum in the life of this city over that period of time. And there were a series of responses, including prior to, early this year as well, from the government on that.
So when do we think, uh, as, approximately, when did the, the Department of Premier and Cabinet or the Premier's office, when did they first started, uh, discussing whether this was a good idea to move these three bills? Are we talking, was it December last year? Was it like a year ago? When, when, when did this first begin?
Yeah, I think so. I think work on some of it was, um, uh, began, I think in December last year. But there's certainly been a broader public debate, um, and government thinking that came out of, um, earlier reviews. And the government didn't necessarily agree with everything in the earlier reviews as well. That sort of sponsored a bit of a public debate and discussion and conversation. So, yeah, look, over a long period of time, to be fair, and, and, um, you know, um, you know, the Chair has made some comments over the period of time, um, on race hate laws. There were other, um, important, um, significant stakeholders making contributions too. So over a long period of time, and again, just to be really clear, the Premier had flagged action in all of these three areas before the phone call came from Mr. Thurtel regarding the dual, the dual incident.
Okay, so when, when you were, um, I mean, I think it would be, would you agree that, that the caravan incident and what was happening over the summer certainly accelerated the discussion? And it felt like there was a sense of urgency that these laws should come through?
Yeah, again, I'd just sort of say, look, you know, one is very clearly, um, a, uh, an alleged terrorism incident that was being, an investigation was being conducted by the JCTT. Um, I think that's different. I accept that, you know, that there's elements of absolutely antisemitism in terms of, uh, the events that occurred. I think that's really clear. It's on the public record. It's the target. So I think, um, you know, we can get, we, we can, I mean, we should talk about motivation. Um, but the idea that there's broad relief, I mean, these events were extraordinarily terrible for, you know, for Sydney. And, um, they were like, they were a blight on us. And, um, the idea that somehow it was really about, um, what was happening necessarily just in January. There was, there was a longer period of, uh, heightened tension, particularly, and, and rising antisemitism unfortunately. And so the government was thinking over a longer period of time about, um, how to deal with that and how to respond. And, you know, I mean, you look at legislation like the anti-protest laws to do with, um, religious places. There were other incidents that quite outside of the dual caravan incident and those fourteen events, which, um, which focused the government's mind on having to tighten the law there, for example.
So we do agree that, uh, since the federal police came out, or since the caravan, uh, incident became public, there has been, it stopped, uh, antisemitic events that make the news, that are high-profile enough to make the news, have stopped, which is great. Now, do you think that's because you brought in these laws? Or because what the federal police court was a criminal con job got exposed? What, what do you think is causing the stop of this?
I, um, I think, um, a couple of things. Uh, look, I think there's not too many weeks go by where there isn't some, um, unfortunate antisemitic event, um, pop up in my newsfeed, brought to my attention from, um, the, the general police briefings we receive. My understanding was, we had an incident this week of Marekville Police Station being graffiti with a swastika.
Right.
Um, I don't think that, um, legislation's always the be all and the end all, but I, I, I would argue that it would have had a chilling effect. And people who were, um, involved in some of those, um, that, oh, that criminal conspiracy, for want of a better term, potentially, particularly doing some of the things encapsulated in those fourteen events, um, they've got a new set of laws and enhanced laws and enhanced, enhanced powers to consider. Um, so, look, I hope, I hope it has had an impact in terms of focusing people's minds about, this is completely unacceptable. This is not who we are as a modern cosmopolitan multicultural society.
Okay, well, one last question at this stage, Chair. I think it's fanciful to think that those laws are, are responsible for that. Um, when legislation is being drafted, if not, uh, legislation in general, I'm guessing that there's a, a discussion in, in the Department of Premier and Cabinet and in the Premier's office and the relevant Minister's office, and I'm guessing it's standard practice that there would be third parties from outside the government that would lobby you to seek to influence the legislation either for or against. Was that the case in, when this legislation was being drafted? And if that is the case, who were those third parties that were lobbying you?
Um, let me, look, I think to be, give you a fulsome answer, let me take that on notice. Because often, Mr. Ruddick, as you'd understand, um, you know, there's different, there's different parts of the process in terms of the policymaking and development first, the cabinet process, obviously, we need to be careful about commenting on that. But then the legislative and the drafting process, draft legislation, uh, often engagement with stakeholders is part of that. So I, I genuinely wouldn't be aware of all that when it comes to engagement with stakeholders. Uh, but in relation to, like, all three pieces of legislation, um, I've got no doubt that we had, you know, stakeholder engagement and views and feedback and varying levels of agreement and disagreement. Across, across all three, probably less so the swastika, um, reforms legislation, perhaps unsurprisingly. But in relation to the criminalisation on ninety-three Zed and, uh, and the, um, anti-protest laws, um, changes, yeah, there were, there were sets of stakeholders who had different views that I'm certainly aware of. That's right.
So you'll take that on notice and get back to it?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Fang.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Cullen, um, you are aware of the MOPS Act, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Do you agree as the Premier's Chief of Staff, you are responsive to the requirements contained within the MOPS Act?
Uh, I'm sure, I'm sure that's right.
Okay. Can you please confirm that you understand, um, the Premier, for whom you are the Chief of Staff, falls under the definition of a political office holder as defined by section three of that act?
That's probably right, but I'm...
Well, what I can assist you, um, I've got copies, made fifteen, so there's one for everyone. Um, this is the, a copy of the, um, Parliamentary Staff Act, um, and it highlights, I've highlighted helpfully.
Thank you.
Um, that, uh, I understand that the Premier, um, is a, a political office holder as defined in the act. So that'll be circulated to you, so we can confirm that. But while that is being circulated, um, I'll just ask, um, what functions, if any, has the Premier delegated to you under Part Two, Sections eleven and twelve of the MOPS Act?
Can I just take a point of order, Chair, in terms of procedural fairness to the witness and to us as, as members of this place? He's referred to a document that's being tabled as we speak. I'll just ask that the questions relating to that document are held off until we've all got a copy.
Uh, well, to be, to, I mean, I don't need to address a point of order, I'm sure, but, uh, ultimately, the member has already said generally he agrees with the assertion that I've made. I'm just providing him the evidence to assert that I'm correct.
I'll take the point of order. This is a matter of asking a question which had some real specificity over an element of a piece of legislation, without the witness having it. Now, that's unreasonable. Now, the witness does have it now, but we've covered this before about the ability of witnesses to respond accurately to questions. And if they are being referred to pieces of legislation, for example, uh, it's appropriate, they'd be provided with the opportunity to read it first and understand it if necessary, and then respond.
Chair, can I just say further?
I have a point of order. And Mr. Cullen now has it, and I'm sure he'll read it and answer his question as he sees fit.
Chair, on a separate point of order, that I just might raise, if it's okay. Um, just in, in terms of asking, um, witnesses questions around legal opinions. I know that the rules of the House don't strictly apply.
I didn't know.
But I just encourage members to be mindful.
Well, I don't think there was a question about legal opinion, so there's no point of order. Continue, Mr. Cullen. You need the question to be asked again, perhaps? There was some time ago now.
Well, well, Mr. Chair, can I just flag where this is going to go is, because I was listening while waiting for this piece of paper to be handed around. I'm sure the Honourable Member was already quoting sections which actually aren't here, so.
No, no.
Just to be clear.
Let me be clear.
Well, Mr. Cullen is answering his question. You let him finish first.
I think, um, Mr. Fang has helpfully highlighted aspects of this document. There's one on the bottom right. I draw your attention to it. It says page four, four of eighteen. Is there any chance we could get pages one to, one to three and five to eighteen? Because it sounds like you're starting to quote from other sections of it.
Yeah, I'm going to, um, but I'm going to do it slowly because I want to elicit, um, certain, uh, answers from you. And I don't want to be flooding you with information because then I would be accused of providing you too much information.
Right, no, well, well, no, no. Mr., I'm just about to rule. It is only fair to the witnesses to ask questions of them when the document's in front of them. We're talking about, and, and to Mr. Cullen's defence, extensive pieces of legislation. In fact, it's stuff that we do every day. You ask me to quote some section out of something, it is grossly unfair. I will allow those questions. The questions themselves are not out of order, but in fairness and procedural fairness to the witnesses, they need to have that document in front of them to answer. Because all we want is a truthful answer, of which it would be very difficult to the witness to provide if they don't have the document in front of them.
Well, then in that case, I will provide, prior to asking the next question, the next document. And if I could table this up, please? So, in relation to, um, then this document that I'm passing to you now.
Yep. We're just going to wait till we all get it as well, Mr. Fang.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, can I just, I appreciate the documents being circulated, but what in effect we've got now is a second page, uh, of, of the act. So we now have pages four, and we now have pages seven.
I'm happy to table the whole act, if they would like.
Well, well, hang on, no, hang on.
Well, it's, I've been very fair in what I've done, and I will continue to do so. It may well be that the member is only going to ask questions relevant to this particular section that he circulates. If he strays outside of that, Mr. Dolly, you are quite within your rights to call a point of order, which I will rule on. And you will notice that I ruled very favourably on your last one. But you're preemptive in saying that he's asked, going to ask something on some other page. It may not be the case.
Mr. Chair, I'd have a cavil with, with, with your ruling.
Or should you?
No. But the, the member, in his previous engagement with the witness, said that I'm, I'm going through, and I paraphrased him, but he said, "I wish to go through a series", or worse, that effect of, of, I don't think he used the word questions, but points. Now, the, 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 the member has foreshadowed, and, and I'm not telling him in any way how to ask questions, but if they are questions around a piece of legislation, you know, one page at a time does make it very hard for the witness to grasp the matter. So my submission is, and yes, it matters if you're a royal courtship, that the member has already foreshadowed his intention of going through a series of questions with respect to the Act, he has said that, and it just, in my submission to you, puts the witness in a difficult position of trying to understand in a piecemeal basis what's going on here.
No, okay. I've heard enough. I'm going to rule. He's within order. It's up to the, this member to determine how he's going to ask his questions or what questions he's going to ask. As long as the witness has in front of them documents that he's referring to, I'm comfortable. If he down, if he delo, if he gives him a deluge of documents and then starts firing questions, I'd suggest you'd say that's grossly unfair because look at all the information you provided him. So if he chooses one page at a time and asks questions from one page at the time, that's fair, that's my ruling. Let's continue on.
Thank you, Chair. So, Mr. Cullen, in relation to the page you've just received, what functions, if any, has the Premier delegated to you under Part Two, Sections 11 and 12 of the MOPS Act?
Part Two, Section 11?
Yep, highlighted. Said delegation by Premier and then delegation by political office holder.
Yeah. Uh, let me just, I will take on notice for the sake of thoroughness, but basically it would be, and partly to help you out, Mr. Fang, in terms of the actual technical title, but it's basically a, a delegation in terms of, it's like an employment, ministerial staff employment delegation. That's the only one that I'm aware of.
Okay. Now, I will turn to, I'll table the next document.
Table it before you ask the question and wait till the witness gets a document.
That's a good point. My colleague has suggested that whilst it's being circulated, do you have a written delegation from the Premier in relation to your, what's been delegated to you as part of your role?
So this goes back to your last question about what the delegation is. So do I have a written?
Instrument. Is there a written instrument of delegation?
Yeah, yes, there is. Yeah.
And is, is that something that you can make available to the committee?
I will absolutely take it on notice and, and come back to the committee on that.
Thank you.
Okay. And to be preemptive, what I'll do also, just to assist timings, I will table the next document so that it can be circulated whilst I'm asking a question about the one you've just received. No, I know, but then it's, then I would be, like I said, I was preempting other points of order.
He, listen, he's wasting our time, not your time. You'll get your time.
Mr. Cullen, I now want to turn... Mr. Cullen, I now want to turn to the State Records Act, 1998. Do you agree with my contention that both you and the Premier are responsive to the State Records Act?
Premier is responsible. Is that a question about whether or not legislation falls under the administrative orders that apply to the Premier? Or that we have responsibilities under the State Records Act? I mean, we've all got responsibilities on the State Records Act.
Yes, of course. Okay, thank you. Do you agree with the definition of the State Records Act? The term public office includes the Premier's office as it includes a political office holder as defined by the MOPS Act, which I, the first piece of paper I tabled to you?
Just seek your counsel on this matter. And I'm sure Mr. Cullen is more than capable of answering the question, but I do seek your guidance again with respect to the relevance of this line of questioning to the terms of reference of this inquiry as it relates to the caravan incident. Perhaps, perhaps in...
Listen, can I bell the cat here in terms of making my ruling? There has been questions put to previous witnesses at upper hearings of this inquiry in relation to record keeping. I'm assuming that's where he's going. You recall those conversations with those witnesses? So I do believe there's a nexus between what he's asking and the relevance of this inquiry. So I'm going to allow it to stand at the moment.
So, do you agree with the definition that the State Records Act, the term public office refers effectively to the Premier's office?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Has the Premier delegated the effective chief executive functions of his office to you? Are you or the Premier considered the effective chief executive of the office in relation to ensuring compliance with that Act?
Look, I don't pretend to the committee to be a star witness with respect to the State Records Act. So I think I should take that on notice and come back to you.
Can I just then, in that respect, can I ask, are you unaware of your requirements as the Chief of Staff to the Premier in relation to the Records Act?
Yeah, in a general sense, yes. I am aware of my obligations.
Could I, you are aware?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fang, is your question, did we take notes in briefings from police? I mean, can we just, we could have got that 20 minutes ago with respect?
Well, 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 with all due respect, Mr. Cullen, I'd like to think I've been extremely fair to you and all witnesses.
And to be fair to you, you have.
Thank you. It's not, it's not for you to tell the, for the member what questions to ask, as it's the same, it's not for the member to tell you what answers to give. It's a two-way street.
So we're circulating another page now from the State Records Act, and I'll wait till Mr. Cullen has it so that I can put some questions to him about that. So, Mr. Cullen, you've received now page 12 of 50 from the State Records Act. Can you please read aloud the text that's highlighted at the top of the page?
Record, Section 12, Record Management Obligations, subsection one, each public office must make and keep full and accurate records of the activities of the office.
Okay.
Do you want me to keep reading?
No, no, that's, that's fine.
We're not going, we're not going to selectively quote the State Records Act.
I mean, you can read the other ones if you'd like, but I would suggest that that first one is the one that's most applicable to the circumstances we're talking about. Can you please confirm for me that you are familiar with the Minister's Officers Handbook?
Sorry, say that again?
Can you please confirm for me that you are familiar with the Minister's Officers Handbook?
Yes.
You are.
I don't have a copy with me.
Ah, well, lucky, lucky, yes, Mr. Cullen, I do have a copy, and I'm about to table that now. So I'll please table this document. Thank you. Now, Mr. Cullen, you've received pages 32 and 33 of the Minister's Officers Handbook?
Yes, it would, do you say 32 and 33?
Yes.
There's probably some missing pages in this document, but, you know, proceed.
Okay. Are you familiar with these pages from the Minister's Officers Handbook?
Do you have a full copy of the ministerial handbook you can stand over?
I do, actually. I do. As it turns out, I do. It's right here. It's quite thick.
That, that's probably a better way for me to say, yes, that's from the Minister.
I'm trying to be a good environmentalist and try and save the paper. So, I mean, I could print all of it. However, I'm just taking out the relevant pages that are relevant to the questions that I'm asking. So we can do this either way, but I'm asking questions that are relevant to these two pages.
Look, you're asking me like an expert witness if this has come from it. I mean, look, I can take your word for it. If you want to give me that copy, I'm happy to look at it and confirm that's the case.
I'm asking if you're familiar with them.
I don't memorize it. Would, I'm not surprised to see that, that something like this would be in the ministerial office handbook.
Okay. Can you confirm that these highlighted pages clearly explain the records and information required of a minister's office?
Yes.
Okay. Can I please confirm you attended the police briefing on the 23rd of January, 2025?
Just going to go to that police chronology, Mr. Fang, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just in terms of their meetings? No. There we go. Was I present on the briefing of the 23rd of January? Yeah, yes, I was, Mr. Fang, yes.
Okay. Do you agree with the assertion from earlier evidence that this was a pens-down meeting?
I think you're referring to comments from an official in the Premier's Department.
Correct.
I think everyone's got their way of characterizing, you know, how they handle themselves in a meeting with this sort of important information with, you know, potential national security, ramifications and alleged terrorism offence, JCTT, a joint investigation with other agencies. I think everyone's got a view about how they would characterize, you know, the recording of notes in a meeting like that, yeah.
Okay.
I'm aware, I'm certainly aware of that comment.
Okay. Do you agree with the assertion it was a pens-down meeting?
I would, I would provide a different characterization, but if, if the question ultimately is, did I take notes in these briefings? The answer is no, I did not.
Okay. How does a pens-down meeting satisfy the requirements of Section 12 of the State Records Act?
Well, I would, again, I, I haven't accepted, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Dever, on the point of order.
Chair, the, the member is asking a witness a legal opinion, which, you know, he may or may not be capable of answering.
To the point of order, Chair, Mr. Cullen has confirmed that he's responsive to the State Records Act. He's confirmed that he is the Chief of Staff to the Premier. He's confirmed that he has responsibilities under the State Records Act. What I'm asking is, is how does a pens-down meeting where the Premier is being briefed on a potential terrorism episode, and no notes were kept by the Premier's Office in relation to what was being provided in that briefing, how is that responsive to the State Records Act?
Further to a point of order, Chair, I'm sure, I'm sure the provisions might have lots of precedent, lots of legal definition. I'm certainly not equipped to interrogate it. No provision like this can be viewed in isolation and viewed with what is just written on the page. I'm sure there are lots of definitional questions. I think to put that on the witness right now with no warning, with no capacity to look at any of that is grossly unfair.
To the point of order.
We're on the clock, and I don't need to hear any more.
You, Mr. Fang, your question again?
I...
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
I haven't ruled yet. I'm going to allow the question. Mr. Cullen can answer it as he sees fit. If he wishes to take it on notice to do further research before he answers it, he's entitled to do so. But I do think the phrasing and the wording of the question was quite fair. I don't think it asked for a legal opinion. It's asked for his understanding of perhaps why this, there was no notes kept, and how does that, how does that live and marry up with the State Record Act? And I'm sure Mr. Cullen will provide us with an answer.
I'm responding to that, Mr. Chair, yeah. So, Mr. Fang, if I could draw your attention to a document you circulated out of the ministerial office handbook?
Yep.
Pages 32 and 33.
Yep.
You didn't highlight all the text that you should have highlighted perhaps. So, page 33, under 9.2.1, Creation of Records, under the section you have highlighted, I then read the following section. Make a record of activities if an action was approved, the minister or a member of their office committed to an arrangement or business financial deal, you provided formal advice. Specific action will need to be taken in response to an event. Other employees may need access to the information now or in the future. I would argue the evidence has been put to use certainly by officials of the Premier's Department. Is, this, these were not decision-making meetings at all. They were information updates from the New South Wales Police about a live investigation by the JCTT into extremely serious content with potential ramifications. They were basically opportunities for the Premier and the Minister for Police to hear firsthand from New South Wales Police and have them update the government on the latest on their investigation, which was extremely important, given the potential for, down the track, there may be a need to, particularly for the Minister, to consider invoking certain powers under terrorism legislation.
Mr. Cullen, can I take you to the last doc point that you've just spoken about? Other employees may need access to the information now or in the future. Is it your contention that a briefing about a matter as important as a suspected terrorist event, that information was not going to need to be accessed now or in the future by other people, for example, to prepare the very legislation that you have discussed?
Well, look, to take your last point first, I think that, again, I've been at pains to sort of take you through why the three pieces of legislation that have passed earlier this year actually don't relate to an alleged terrorism event or terrorism powers. So they are actually very...
Fine, then I'm happy to take that and leave it to one side.
Please let me finish. So that's the first point. I don't think that's right. And look, my view, again, you'd be surprised to hear aligns very much with the, the answer that's been provided to you by the Premier's Department in answer to a question on notice, that given the seriousness and the, the expert, the, the expertise of the New South Wales Police, that it was entirely appropriate that that was the agency who was in every one of these briefings, providing these updates to the government, that, that if appropriate, they were keeping notes as we go. But these were not decision-making meetings.
And so does that mean each briefing was de novo and had to start again?
Sorry, each briefing was...
Was de novo, had to start at the beginning because there's no notes that anybody could refer to to refresh their memory from the previous time?
Look, we're largely, in, in relation to the principles at least, I think I'd be right in saying that Mr. Hudson would have been in every one of those conversations. And then the Premier and the Minister would have been in most of them, if not all. So, you know, it was an ongoing investigation, you know, no one was experiencing dementia. We clearly knew that there was a live investigation unfolding. And so it, it didn't need, it didn't need a refresher at the start of every conversation. We knew the basic subject matter and the main moving parts and the issues the investigation were confronting as we went.
Chair, could I just finish a few of the points before, I've almost finished this line of questioning. I just wanted to...
Well, I hope you are.
So, Mr. Cullen, just in relation to the point that you raised, whilst you're talking about the issues out of the handbook, you'll note on the page 12 of 50 that I circulated earlier, which has dot, point 12, Records Management Obligations, which is actually part of the State Records Act to the post of the handbook, each public office must make and keep full and accurate records of the activities of the office. So I will ask you, who instructed the meeting be a pens-down meeting?
I refer you to the same page, subsection three, which again, Chair, wasn't highlighted. The authority may permit such departures from the requirements of the standards and codes as it considers necessary or desirable to accommodate the particular needs of a public office or class of public offices.
And how did you satisfy that?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Fang... Mr Chair, Mr Fang, to go to the answer to your question, I don't recall a conversation between any of the parties to the briefing that we wouldn't take notes. I've got to say, in my case, and I can only speak for myself in these briefings, I just had, I, I think, an instinctual awareness about the significance of this particular subject matter, the seriousness of a terrorism investigation, the idea that I would do something which, in terms of taking detailed notes about where an investigation was up to, I would be worried about the potential for that to, to go missing or to be misplaced. And, again, I had full confidence that police, New South Wales Police and Mr Hudson was the right party to take us through in terms of these updates to the investigation.
I'm going to press the question that I asked, Chair, which was who instructed the meeting be a pens-down meeting?
I think, Mr Chair, with respect, I think I've addressed that in my answer. And I certainly haven't accepted that characterisation. But I've made, I basically said there was no conversation. People, people form their own judgements about their obligations and, in my case, I didn't take any notes.
Chair, the evidence from Kate Marr on the 22nd of May 2025 was that this was a pens-down meeting. I will ask again, who instructed this meeting be a pens-down meeting?
Mr Chair, there was absolutely.
There was no?
There was no instruction, there was no instruction from the Premier's Department. Not at all.
No. Mr Cullen, it's my contention the Premier's Office has failed to satisfy the requirements under the State Records Act. I further contend either you or the Premier is responsible for this failure. Am I incorrect?
Yes.
How?
For the reasons I've outlined, and we've gone through the last half an hour, page by page, including parts of the handbook, the State Records Act, and things that you haven't highlighted or missed out and conveniently skipped over. So, no, I, in the strongest possible terms, disagree with your conclusion.
So, you believe that you've satisfied all the requirements under the State Records Act?
I'm aware of our obligations under the State Records Act, and I believe we've complied and we're fully within the context of that framework.
I'm happy to hand over now, Chair.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just going to ask one question about the summons process, then come back to the, the thing. I want to quote from an interview between Premier Minns and Ben Fordham on Radio 2GB at 7.15am on the 17th of June. I repeat, did, no trick, Mr Cullen, did you hear it?
No, 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 I got it.
So, 7.15 on the 17th of June 2025.
Yes.
And we're five minutes and four seconds into the interview. I have the transcript here. Will your staffers be happy to appear before this inquiry, Premier Minns? I don't want them to. I mean, we've had extensive discussions with them about it. Can you please inform me what extensive discussions the Premier had with you or any of the witnesses in relation to this particular matter?
Of being summoned? Look, I think, I think I'd just point you back to the start, Mr Chair, about, in terms of some questions I got regarding the summons process. Basically, my conversations certainly with the Premier in relation to that subject matter, including probably before that Fordham interview last, last Tuesday. It was, it was fair, I'd have to go back and check, but there would have been, I think I'm right in saying, Mr Chair, there would have been news reporting that would have led to that, those lines of questions. I don't think it was like a break.
I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair proposition, Mr Cullen.
It wasn't a breaking news, I've got the summons type thing. It was, there was some public commentary on it. So, look, my conversations with the Premier about the subject matter in terms of every step of the way with the inquiry were really about how was he, conversation about how he was responding to getting questions on it. Not, not, not about the process that we as staff were going through in responding to your invitation and then to your summons. So, yeah.
Okay, Mr Vardia, I'll put it to you then. The Premier says, I don't want them to in relation to should they appear, will your staffers appear at the inquiry? I don't want them to. I mean, we've had extensive discussions with them about it. Not discussions, not in passing, extensive discussions, this is a Premier's own words. What conversations and discussions did you engage with the Premier on in relation to this?
No further discussions outside of what James has mentioned. Yeah, no further discussion outside of what he's covered.
Miss Michael?
Um.
Same site?
About the same, yes.
Mr Nelson, I understand that you don't work in the Premier's Office, but did the Premier have extensive discussions with you about this matter?
No.
Mr South, anything? No direct discussions with the Premier in relation to this?
No.
Okay. Let's go back to January. Now, in evidence, and I'll direct this to you, Mr Cullen, in evidence to start with, in evidence given by the Commissioner of Police and her members of her executive team, a table of scheduled briefings with time, dates and locations and invited in attendees were provided to this committee as a result of questions taken on the answer. So, they're on the public website, they're out everywhere. So, no tricks here. Evidence states that on the 20th of January 2025, staff from the Premier's Office was invited to attend a phone briefing. We've seen your members of New South Wales Police. Were you present in that one?
Uh, I don't believe so, no.
Were you, Mr Avadi?
Uh, no.
Were you, Miss Michael?
No.
So, when the police say there were members from the Premier's Office present, who would they be referring to then?
Mr Chair, I think probably, I'd have to go back and check. There might, like, with respect, there may be the odd inaccuracy in terms of comparing records with some of these in terms of, in terms of that.
Can I just stop you there, Mr Cullen, to your point?
Yeah.
So, I can clear this up. Are you suggesting the police are wrong here?
Um.
Bearing in mind they've given their evidence on oath, as is everybody here today.
Well, I, look, I think you can make a mistake. I don't know if that means you're wrong. We're all able to make mistakes.
If you're either right or you're wrong.
Yeah, look, I mean, can I, can I just make a general comment to assist you, Chair?
Sure.
To understanding clearly from our, about who was attending these briefings. I think I was recovering from a bout of sickness and I wasn't at work on the 20th of January. I, I mean, you could direct your questions elsewhere, but my understanding of the, the main conversation in the morning certainly was between the, the Premier and Mr Thurtel. I, I don't recall being in that follow-up one because I was not at work. I got a phone call from the Premier, basically saying, obviously, there's a significant, significant investigation underway that you should be aware of. I then got returned to work the next day. The first briefing that I attended was the 21st of January at the morning at 9.30. And then basically from that point on, for the purpose of this chronology, wherever it says staff from the Premier's Office, it would be a pretty sure bet that that's myself and no one else from the office.
Yourself and no one else.
From the Premier's Office.
All right. And again, this is not a trick question. I've received information that teams briefing invites were set out from the Premier's Office,
Yep.
of which invitees were Mr Avadia and Ms Michael. And I want to put that on the record as to why they are here today. There has been suggestions that this is a, an exercise in roping in people for no apparent reason. We have reasonable cause because those teams briefings to suspect that they were there. We have been provided information by the police that was, staff were present. You tell me, and I'll correct me if I'm wrong because I don't want to put words in your mouth, you can't tell me who was there on, is that correct?
That's right, but I will, again, for the fullness and trying to assist the committee, let me take that on notice and come back to you. But, I mean, as a, as a rule for all these briefings, it was me, me in the room, basically, on behalf of the Premier's Office.
Let's just, and this is a hypothetical.
And can I just, just to help you too? Just in terms of like the internal processes with those calendar invitations, which I think you were talking about? It would be reasonably common for senior members of the staff to get the calendar invitation for the purpose of having in their diary so they're aware of what the Premier is doing at that time and the significance of it. That doesn't necessarily always necessitate them attending.
Certainly. So, it would be reasonable though, on the other side, to accept that perhaps an inquiry, a committee inquiry inquiring into those things, who saw those teams invitations, it would be a reasonable expectation that perhaps those people may have attended.
Yes, but can I make a comment there?
You can.
A respectful one. I, I would submit that there might have been an opportunity for the committee to make, to perhaps provide correspondence or ask written questions direct, along with an invitation, to ask that question, if that was the purpose, rather than calling them. And it's, it's a significant step to call ministerial staff, I would argue.
Certainly is.
To a committee. So, I think perhaps maybe that submissed inciteration should be given for next time about an intervening step, which would have provided clarity about the level of involvement with particular staff.
Well, Mr Cullen, to your point, this is my committee, and I will direct it the way I will.
Understood.
And I don't tell you how to run your office.
Understood.
So, let's go to the briefing then that you were present for, which was, the first one was the 21st?
That's right.
Okay. What was said in that particular meeting?
I think that was me.
Might have been, keep notes.
Yeah, look, look.
Yeah, notes might have helped.
Certainly, the, the first, the first briefing that I attended, which would have been at the, in the PEO, which is in the police.
Executive office.
The chronology, that's right. And I'm pretty sure I'm, I'm pretty, we basically got a, a high-level update from Mr Hudson about where it was, where this was up to. Obviously noting that it was early stages. Yeah, I think, and I think, again, I think there's a fair bit of evidence on the record too, to that effect as well. So, I think that's probably a fair way to surmise.
So, you're just relying on your memory for this because as we understand, there's no notes?
That's correct.
Okay. Just put a proposition to you, Mr Cullen.
Yes.
I've been around for a long time, and I look around this room and there's probably the honourable Greg Donnelly and perhaps Mr Ross Nelson likely, the only ones that can remember. The Hilton Hotel bombing in 1978, a significant national security issue. I'd suggest since 1978 until now, there hasn't been another potential threat to national security in New South Wales to this extent.
Uh, Lindt Siege Cafe was significant.
You've got me?
Yeah.
I agree, I agree. But I do know.
But I wasn't alive in 1978, just to confirm.
I didn't suggest you were, right? I'm setting the scene here for something. But I can tell you that the Siege Cafe, there's extensive notes kept and records, and contemporaneous records of all that operation from the get-go. What I'm suggesting here is, using the Premier's own words, a mass casualty event?
Potential mass casualty event.
Potential mass casualty event.
Yes.
And no other way than calling this out other than terrorism. If we're to accept that's what the Premier's views were at the time, I find it extraordinary that there is not a single note being kept of the most significant national security event. We learned a lot from the Lindt Cafe siege, coronial inquests and a number of other inquiries. I'm sure one of them would have been the need for keeping extensive notes. So, at such time that its matters are reviewed, there'd be a record. Were you, sir, as an experienced Chief of Staff, concerned? Listen, and I'm going to use my language here, we need to cover our arse. Because if this thing goes bad, we need to know what the police told us and when they told us. Wasn't there that level of concern inside your office at all?
Look, I think there was a high level, high level of trust, as you'd expect, between the Premier, the government and New South Wales Police. And the, you know, I, you, you sort of raised, made a few comments there about record-keeping. I would point you to the evidence of police, and I think the appropriateness, given it was their investigation, that they were the ones to do it. You've raised, you've talked about terrorism and potential mass casualty event, and I think that's absolutely legitimate lines of inquiry. I do though, to be fair, Mr Chair, I do need to refer you to the, the transcript of the police and Mr Hudson appearing before this committee on Monday, the 7th of April, page 32, and I apologise, I don't have copies.
That's fine, I've probably got it somewhere.
And I'm happy, I'm happy to, obviously happy to be told that I'm wrong, but.
No, no, we are going to accept what you're going to tell us, Mr Cullen.
Thank you.
We don't believe you would deliberately mislead us. What page was it again, sorry?
So, it's page, bottom of page 32.
Yep.
I've got, I'm just trying to, let me just go to the, yeah, this is obviously the right selection committee. Monday, 7th, committee met at 9.30 is the front page, Report on Proceedings. And the Chair, the Chair set the Chair, which is obviously yourself. While we're on that then, hearing in mind that there are only you three that briefed the Premier, and you're obviously, you're obviously engaging with Mr Hudson, how did the Premier come to the conclusion it was terrorism then? Because that's what he said at the press conference. Mr Hudson, we were treating the investigation at its highest, and he knew that, which was a terrorism incident. You responded, but you've just said that, and I can't remember your exact words, along the lines that you didn't say terrorism. Because of concerns that you had, yes, here's the Premier in front of all the media saying it's a terrorism attack. Where would he have possibly got that information from if he didn't get it from you? He got the information from us. The, the, the comments the Premier made in response to the leak on the 29th of January, the references to terrorism as a terrorism investigation, the language potential mass casualty event was not aligned, dreamt up by the Premier. It was briefing, in briefings from New South Wales Police, provided to the government, provided to the Premier. That's why those terms were used. And the evidence before you, it's, don't take my word for it, take the word of New South Wales Police.
But also then, didn't Mr Hudson say in his evidence that you have a copy of before you, that at the first available opportunity, or word similar to this, right? We told the Premier that there were alternatives to terrorism.
Yeah, I mean, I know, and I know, obviously, I've had a look at that transcript and, and it's sort of, there's been searching questions about when exactly that particular proposal was put. I think I would just say, Mr Chair, this was a matter that New South Wales Police investigated at its highest, to use their language, all the way up until the 21st of February, when that AFP source was discredited, and that's obviously Mr Hudson's testimony to you. I'd also point to you to the press conference that the Premier and Mr Hudson gave on the 29th of January, the significant media coverage of that press conference, and then a follow-up interview on 2GB, Mr Fordham, with Mr Fordham, that Mr Hudson had the day after, where the avenues that you're talking about, the alternative, the alternative angles investigations that police might be contemplating was on the public record very clearly at that, at that point in time.
Yeah, put there by Mr Hudson, not the Premier. So, let's go back to the 29th press conference. Would you be surprised if I tell you that at no stage during that entire interview, not the, not the bits that were aired on the media, but from start to finish of about 15 minutes, that at no stage did Dave Hudson call this, did he use the word terrorism? At no stage did he use the word terrorism. And if you look in the transcript, as you'll see, he agrees, but he says, oh, well, I don't think it was a conscious decision. But the police never, at that press conference on the 29th or the 30th, used the word terrorism. The only person that described it as terrorism, the only way I can call this out as terrorism, was the Premier.
It was a, that press conference on the 29th of January, which again was in response to a leaked report, it confirmed that there was a JCTT investigation, that alleged terrorism incident was being investigated by New South Wales Police. That was very clear. And on that same page of that transcript which I've quoted from, as you, as you allude to, Mr Chair, you put this proposition to him and he said, and Mr Hudson said in response, because you were saying, why didn't you use that term? And Mr Hudson replied, I didn't know that I hadn't, sir. And the Chair said, well, you hadn't at all. I've watched the tape from beginning to end. You never mentioned. And the Chair said, well, you hadn't at all, I've watched the tape from beginning to end, you never mentioned the word terrorism, and there's no reason for that? Mr. Hudson responds, it wasn't a conscious decision to exclude the word.
Well, that's what I said, so.
No, I just, I just.
In fairness to Hudson, I said, he said it wasn't a conscious decision. But notwithstanding that fact, Hudson never used the word terrorism at all. The next day in which Webb appeared beside Hudson and beside the Premier, Webb doesn't use the word terrorism at all. The only person who has used terrorism to describe this discovery was the Premier. Notwithstanding the fact, from the very get go, Hudson tells us in that evidence before you, I told the Premier there were alternatives to terrorism. Continuing on, so we have a full view, however, Mr. Premier, until otherwise, we will treat it at the highest level. But we want to tell you from the get go, Dave Hudson, the most experienced detective in New South Wales, the leader of the joint task force into counter-terrorism, tells the Premier, listen, we found this, but we don't think it's quite what it looks to be. Then I'll leave that as a position. Ms. Michael, you're his press.
So, Mr. Chair, can I just respond to that?
Yeah.
Just like with respect.
Sure.
I, I, I just think there's a very convenient rewriting of history here and, and squashing of time and of concepts. Mr. Thur, I wasn't a part of the conversation, the original conversation of Mr. Thurtel alerting the Premier to this.
Yep.
But I hazard a guess that the conversation was, uh, Premier, we've got a hoax, but there's an outside chance it's a terrorism event. We just thought we'd bring it to your attention. These are, the potential of police needing to activate terrorism events.
You weren't, you weren't part of the conversation, were you, Mr. Cullen?
I've been in all the briefings and the dates I suggest. I, I told you that I wasn't.
Okay, well then, please don't give us suppositions, because if one of my members starts putting suppositions to you, the first people to take a point of order would these, be these people over here. So if you weren't part of the conversation, it's unhelpful for you, unhelpful for this committee or anybody else for you to say, oh, look, I reckon this is what would have been said. Let's stick to the conversations that you're involved in. Now, Ms. Michael, you're the, you're the Premier's press secretary, I think you said all words, what, press advisor?
Yeah.
Did he have a conversation with you before these two media conferences on the twenty ninth and thirtieth?
Um, he didn't have a conversation with me in particular, but we did, uh, I, I believe at the time, um, we have like a pre presser huddle. Um, and we had Mr. Hudson and the Premier in that room.
Right. Was it ever discussed with the Premier that, listen, you better be very careful about the words you use when you go in front of this camera?
No.
That was never, you didn't prompt him and say, listen, boss, be careful here?
No, I mean, it was a, it was a situation where he had more information than I did at this point about the situation.
All right, I ta, I take no um adverse position in relation to you. He is your boss, he's decided this is what he's going to do. Did he discuss with you, Mr. Cullen, listen, I'm going to go out there and call this terrorism? Despite the police telling him, hang, hang on, it's potential for terrorism, there's also plenty of potential for something else.
Yeah, look, I, I've got to respectfully disagree, I, I don't, I, that would not be my recollection of the characterization at the time of the seriousness of which this was being dealt with. Um, potential mass casualty, potential mass casualty event was not a term thrown around lightly at all. Um, that was a very serious thing that was introduced to, introduced by police in those briefings. Um, I, 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 I think that there has been a bit of a, sort of a squashing here after the fact. Um, the, the, the potential for um that caravan with that explosives and so ignited uh could have been devastating, as we know, and that had to be treated seriously. Uh, again, I just bring you back to the reason why the Premier and Mr. Hudson are at the press conferences because there was a leaked report, uh, and there needed to be some clarity provided. Uh, and to be fair, and to be frank, um, some calm given that police were on it, there was a live investigation, uh, and that the experts were doing their thing.
Okay, well, there's a couple of points to take away from there. Mass casualty event, you said, was introduced by the police.
Yeah.
I don't think Hudson used those words at all.
I point you to, Mr. Chair, the transcript with the Premier's department and the recollection of Ms. Ma. She used that term, potential mass casualty event. She attended the briefing of the twenty third of January, which was prior to the press conference on the twenty ninth of January.
Well.
And that was her testimony unprompted on that, with, with respect to that word, those words.
Mr. Cullen, did Ms. Ma have notes of that conference?
You, with respect, you're asking, you're asking me about evidence that other people have already given. She's already answered your questions on that, you've had an opportunity to question her.
Well, well, we can draw our own conclusions.
Anyway, let's come back to this. You said we needed to add clarity, that's the reason for the press conference.
Yes.
Okay. Define for me what you believe clarity to be. Clear, concise, precise information, clarity?
The seriousness of what was a J C T T investigation. You know the list of agencies that that involves and the significance of it, and the fact that New South Wales Police were treating and taking it at its highest, and that needed to be allowed to do its thing.
Yeah.
Can I also posit, Mr. Roberts, just quickly? If the, if, if we had our way, the Premier had his way, I hazard a guess, hazard a guess that the first, any, the, the public would have been aware of these matters would have been at the conclusion of investigation, which is how you generally do it. Because I think a corresponding point is, which the committee has explored at various points, is what happened after the twenty ninth of uh January, the press conference. Um, we were getting strong advice from New South Wales Police that the status of the investigation needed to be kept confidential because of that high level and, and because of the nature of the covert and overt operations that were underway, and you've received evidence directly from police to that effect. And that obviously ultimately culminated in the press conference on the tenth of March, where both police forces announced a number of arrests. So it was very clear to us on the way through, providing regular rolling updates could have jeopardized that outcome and those police investigations, and we were not going to do that.
Chief, I ask a clarified question.
Yeah, go on, sorry. Uh, Mr. Cullen, um, you've said the police provided, um, I guess, advice to you quite, quite clearly about the, the matter. Um, before the twenty ninth of January press conference, when was the last piece of advice that the Premier received from police?
Um, I think I probably should take that on notice, to be fair.
Well, I can help you because um we had the evidence given to us.
No, no, no. The witnesses already said he's going to take it on notice.
Okay.
You're not going to help him out, he said, he said he's going to take it on notice, okay? Now, let's go back to this. You said it was highly, we're talking about whether it's terrorism or it's not terrorism. You said it was all highly confidential and, and stuff like that. What was the Premier's thoughts then? That after he said it was terrorism and no other way to call it out, that Dave Hudson went on the public record, not worried about confidentiality at all, being the lead investigator in this matter, and says to the public, despite what the Premier said a, a moment ago, that there are alternatives to terrorism here. What was the conversation inside the Premier's office when Hudson came out and said that?
Well, you asked me about the Premier's thoughts, I'm not sure that's an appropriate question.
Okay, well, no, I withdraw that then, I withdraw that. What was the conversation inside the office, the Premier's office, after Hudson had come out publicly? Very, very early on, extremely early on, in the same time as the Premier's announcing.
Press conference.
Yeah, yeah. What was the thoughts back in the office? What happened to our confidentiality now then? That we're hiding.
Well, I mean, well, Mr., I mean, look, there's, there's, there's a lot of contentions there, Mr. Roberts. I mean, I think I would just say that.
There's no contention.
No, no, you're saying what happened to our confidentiality, there was a leaked report um with significantly concerning content, and there was an obligation on the Premier and the government and the police to provide some context that there was an investigation and that that was how that was being handled. So, yeah, I mean, the, of course, the preference would have been that police would continue to brief the government confidentially to the conclusion of the investigation. That's our preference, exactly right. And, and that's, and that's, and obviously the, the Premier made the decision to go out and provide some additional clarity in relation to that and absolutely the right thing to do.
So, the lead investigator says that there's alternatives to terrorism in the press conference. The Premier says, there is no other way of calling this out other than terrorism.
Did you, are you, are you reading from a transcript?
I'm not, but I can.
Well, I'm happy, I mean, that's actually, I, I'm happy for you to do that.
All right, well, it's on.
I know, I, I absolutely, I absolutely.
Well, no, hang on, the Premier wrote to me and said that he did.
I accept Mr. Roberts, well, that, this is right, I, I just think, a lot of this is already on the record. I think we're kind of going back over what's clearly on the public record.
We, we are asking.
The Premier referred to this as terrorism, the Premier referred to this as potent, a potential mass casualty event. That is just a matter of public record and, and we've covered that extensively.
Well, we have covered that, but we want to know why the Premier didn't tell the public that there were alternatives to terrorism then. Your, your words, I haven't finished my question yet, Mr. Cullen, your words were, this was to provide clarity and calm. Were you always calm? I can't see how the Premier, standing in front of a press conference, saying there is no other alternative to terrorism, provided any calm to anybody. Now, I watched that news and I believe what the Premier told me. I believed it, right? He says there's no alternative to terrorism, at that stage, I had no reason to doubt it. I thought there was, but he is possessed of other information that he hasn't bothered to share with the public. The police end up sharing it, but the Premier didn't. So how does that provide calm? I'd in fact think it would inflame fears that the community would have if the Premier stood up there and said, this is a mass, potential mass casualty event and no other way of calling it out other than terrorism.
Look, I would just come back to, Mr. Chair, that the Premier's comments on the twenty ninth of January were based on the latest advice from police and.
Which was what?
That's it.
Mr. Cullen, what was that latest advice?
That there was a joint se, there was a J C T investigation, uh, looking at a potential mass casualty event, and there was lines of inquiry i- in relation to that.
Well, how did, well, how did Hudson explain to the Premier, bearing in mind you've kept no notes? How did he explain him, well, listen, boss, there are some alternatives to terrorism here, what did he say?
Um, Mr. Roberts, I think that Mr. Hudson's actually provided a fair bit of evidence to the committee already regarding. I, 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 I think he's provided and put on the record.
I'm not asking him, I'm asking you, Mr. Cullen.
How, how, how he updated it.
I'm asking you, what did he say? There's no notes for us to be able to look at, so we're relying on you, sir, and your integrity in telling us what Hudson said to the Premier.
Um, I just, look, I think I do need to be careful in terms of the progress of these particular briefings over a period of time. They do involve a delicate investigation regarding other agencies, uh, and sources. Um, so I think that's pro, I've got to be extremely careful and respect that, and I understand that you've had Mr. Hudson in front of you.
Who told us he said it, he's not worried about those things that you are.
I just come back, I. Well, with, with respect, Mr. Chair, I mean, you, you have had a number of goes at the police on this as well, and he's perhaps been.
I just asked some questions, there was no goes, I supported the police in their actions.
Sorry, Chair.
So I don't think go is a fair surmising.
Can I, can I take a point of order, it's not related to the questioning? Um, we welcome people in the public gallery, of course, we do at all times, but the standing orders are very clear about public gesturing um during proceedings. I've refrained from taking a point of order um for a significant amount of time in these proceedings, but I just ask that reminders be sent to people in the public gallery around conduct and the requirements of the standing orders in this department.
That's something we must enforce, I must admit, I haven't seen anything, but for the members in the public gallery that would have listened to what Mr. Neander said, there is a level of decorum and respect that is expected and required. And of those that don't comply with it will be asked to leave.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Neander.
Yeah, uh, so to go back, this is about Mr. Hudson briefing.
Yeah, what did, what did Hudson say to Premier Minz?
That they were, that the New South Wales Police were investing in, in the way. The J C T T isn't set up for a trifle, it was a, it was serious subject matter.
Now, it has to be set up, we know it has to be because of the finding of.
And in terms of the trigger, in terms of, in terms of questions for government, the potential other terrorism powers that might be available should it get, it reach a certain threshold, that was the way in which the police came to the, uh, the Premier in the first instance. And I'd just draw your attention to a, a line when it comes to the use of the term terrorism by the Premier and the press conference. He said, this would strike terror into the community, particularly the Jewish community, and it must be met with the full resources of the government. I want to assure the people of New South Wales, that's exactly what's happening. I mean, I think that, again, it goes to the point and the purpose of that particular press conference.
Yes, okay, go on.
No.
No, I don't want to interrupt, sorry.
No, it's fine.
I've been breaching my own standards that I.
That's, that's fine, Mr. Chair.
Um. So you can't tell us at all, and I assume you can't, Mr. Obadie, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, because apparently I don't think you were at any of these then, but I've just got to ask, and you weren't at any of them, even Mrs. Michael, Miss Michael. Okay, so you can't tell us exactly what Hudson said the alternatives to terrorism were. I don't know how many briefings you've had from the police on terrorism, but I'm assuming this is probably the only one, and I hope this is the only one. Serious terrorism stuff. I'd imagine this stuff would be sticking in my mind because of the serious nature of it. No notes are kept. You can't tell us what Hudson said, what emphasis he placed on whether it's terrorism or whether it's the alternatives? Because Hudson tells us straight away, his gut instinct is, this is not terrorism. And did you tell the Premier that? Yes, I did. When? At the first available opportunity. And then did he tell the public that? Yes, he did, at the press conference, standing right beside the Premier, who says, no other way of calling this out other than terrorism.
Is there a question there?
Yeah, there is.
So what was the question?
What was the discussion inside the Premier's office in relation to that?
Uh, again, look, I, I just think this was a, an investigation that was taken at its highest by New South Wales Police from the start, and that was very clear. Uh, you asked, I think on the way through there, Mr. Chair, about Mr. Hudson and alternative lines of inquiry.
Yep.
Um, that obviously became apparent as we got further briefings that there were particular other lines of inquiry.
Okay, I'll stop you there, what were they?
Well, this is where I look at, I, I do need to be a bit careful, given the subject matter and given that some of these matters are probably before the court as well. Um, but there was clearly, um.
Other alternatives are not before the court, Mr. Cullen, don't hide behind that.
Sure, well, look, put it this way, um.
And the court is not going to be persuaded by what you and I say here.
I'm just trying to be a bit delicate, just given the, the, the complexities here and the, the nature of this investigation, but um, put it this way, there were, there were, there were alternative lines of investigation that were clearly being explored early on and really didn't get, um, for want of a better term, shaken out until the twenty first of February.
That's your interpretation of it?
Yes.
Contrary to Hudson saying in evidence, I know that from the very get go, we thought there were other alternatives. We were obliged to treat it at its highest, and I congratulated the police on doing that.
Until the twenty first of February, until the twenty first of February.
I said, if you hadn't, and it had gone tits up.
Yeah.
Right, we'd have been in big trouble, so I congratulated the police on their investigation, I did, I think they did a magnificent job, magnificent job.
Yep.
Right, and that's on that record there in front of you. But Hudson tells us, we are obliged to this and we're going to do this on the off chance that it is, but we're telling you, Premier, from the get go, we don't think it is.
Look, I just think, I guess, bringing it back to the evidence you've got, the, it was considered its highest by New South Wales Police until the twenty first of February. Um, it was very clear that other lines of inquiry that police were exploring uh couldn't be confirmed until that point, and that's just the fact of the matter.
Okay, so if we take it back to the evidence we've got, we've got the evidence of Dave Hudson then, telling the Premier that there is other alternatives to terrorism, that's the evidence we've got.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I, I just think.
We have nothing to contrary to that.
Yeah, I, well, this is, okay, this is the point about um the government and certainly police providing run, running commentaries during a live investigation. The, the matters that had, as the live investigation continued through to the twenty first of February, legal advi, legal advice provided to police that they couldn't pursue terrorist charges. The advising to the government that's the case in the press conference on the tenth of March. Um, all through that was um a very, uh, it, it was very clear on, on the, in terms of those alternative lines of inquiry, that until those various points, uh, police couldn't be sure in relation to that. And uh, that was, that was the advice, but the running commentary point, the consistent advice from the police after the twenty ninth of January as well, was um, probably, this, it wouldn't have been how they put it, but um they had a strong preference against providing public updates, just to the nature of the investigation. The people who were involved, as we know, there were allegedly many, uh, the related incidents as well. Uh, and there was a series of covert and overt strategies being deployed um in relation to those. So in terms of being able to provide the running commentaries, as you can imagine, the, someone making public comments about that, that particular thing, you'd probably have a response from those involved. And so.
Right.
That was the, that was the strong advice from the police throughout and, uh, and that obviously governs. and that obviously governs the approach that the Premier took about not providing running updates.
Okay, let's go to that then, running commentary.
Yep.
Premier didn't want to provide running commentary. The strong preference of the police was not to do so. Who called the press conference on the 29th of January?
Would have been, it would have been the Premier's office.
So, what, to provide running commentary?
We would have put out a-
Against the strong preference of the police?
Mr Roberts, there was a leak. It was a significant report in the Daily Telegraph online and it unsurprisingly got picked up very quickly given the subject matter. The idea, I mean, if the theory is that the government should have said nothing until the 10th of March about something as significant as a caravan being found with that amount of explosives and the potential to do that damage, I mean, that would have been preposterous. So, of course it was contingent upon the government and the Premier decided that he needed to provide clarity around it and obviously police providing an update, that there was an investigation commenced and underway. And they were taking it at the highest possible level. It's entirely appropriate.
We go back to that word clarity again. Clarity as to what? As to the Premier's version or as to the police's version?
I would, I, look, I would just point you to the transcript and to the reporting and to Mr Hudson the next day as well. I think you've got to take, you've got to take the whole body of evidence being put out by the government.
I'll take Mr Hudson as being the most reliable witness here who had a better memory than it. Can I, just, I'll just finish my position. Go on.
I've just got one question on this point.
And then, and then I must say, we're going to go to the government to give them an opportunity to ask questions if they wish and then we'll come back.
Thank you. I've got, I've just got one question on this chair and then I've just got one other thing. But, Mr Cullen, when did you first become aware of the leak to the telly? Did they, so I suppose the question is, surely you were made aware of that before it had been? Did you, were you contacted for comment? And I'm opening this question to all the members of the panel at this point.
Yeah, it might have been the case that the Daily Telegraph, it might have been the Daily Telegraph, I think might have called Sarah that afternoon. I don't remember the exact time. It probably wasn't too far, it was probably very close to the publishing of that report. It wouldn't have been a long passage of time between those. So that, that would have been the first awareness that the Daily Telegraph was going to produce that. I understand that Mr Hudson has provided much more detailed evidence regarding the leak and how that came about and the conversations he might have had in relation to, with the police media unit and publications ahead of that going out as well.
Thank you, but I'm just, the question is about the Premier's office and your decision to respond the way you did. And perhaps Ms Michael, if you could assist the committee with telling us when you became aware and what advice was provided to the Premier and the Premier's response to that, if you could.
Yeah, absolutely. So I got a call from James O'Doherty at the Daily Telegraph that afternoon. I think the press conference was at 5:45. He, I can't recall with certainty, but it was probably around 3 o'clock or something like that. It was late in, later in the afternoon, warning, basically a statement from the government in relation to that. I didn't really give anything at the time in that conversation. I just said, I'll come back to you. I had a conversation with the Premier that this situation is obviously in the public domain now and we made that decision that, you know, because it's in the public domain, it's such a serious thing that the best course of action would be to stand up with police and address the fact that it was now in the public domain. And that's basically how it happened.
And did Mr Doherty tell you where the information had come from?
No, he never does.
And did you ask him?
No.
You didn't ask him where this information had come from?
I'm not going to ask a journalist for their source. It's not going to happen.
And was anybody else here aware or contacted about the preemptive decision to, sorry, the decision of the Premier's office to go out and make a public comment and declare it a terrorism event?
Are you asking?
Yeah, and Ms South, if you, Dr South?
Not me personally. I don't handle media matters in the office, but you might want to ask Mr Nelson.
Yeah, Mr Nelson.
Yeah, I was aware of it because I spoke to the Premier's office and they told me what had happened and that they had planned to put the Premier up with the Deputy Commissioner.
And did you speak with the Premier at all?
No.
No. Okay, thank you. And notwithstanding the understanding that this would potentially undermine the police investigation, the decision was made then to do the stand-up?
Well, it was out. Who are you asking?
Yeah, I mean, look, I just, I wouldn't agree with your characterization. I think that something significant like that going unremarked upon is just, like, to be frank, it's not real world. The idea that you would not either proactively say something or you wouldn't be commenting quickly, you know, I mean, even the next day, I mean, it did provide clarity. And the whole purpose of that press conference was absolutely providing clarity and reassurance, including Mr Hudson actually, yeah, a public appeal for information, which again, very appropriate and very textbook when it comes to police talking about the fact that they're launching a significant investigation.
And did you after, did either yourself, Ms Michael, or you, Mr Cullen, debrief with the Premier about his decision to stand up and declare it and say it can only be characterized as a terrorism event?
Look, I can't recall, I can't recall a particular conversation about that after the press conference. I'm sure we did have a conversation about it, but yeah, I don't, I don't recall the specifics.
Can I ask you about the situation reports that the Premier's Department issue? You're aware of those?
I am.
Are you aware of the Situation Whole of Government Response to Anti-Semitism Report of the 7th of February 2025?
Look, not specifically, but I'm happy for you to table or provide it to me or ask questions and I'm happy to. Yeah.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Mr Chair, would it be possible to consider a bathroom break?
Most certainly. In procedural fairness, I've been an old man myself.
It's going to get, it's going to, it's going to get willing.
Thank you, sir.
Well, what, can we just say, would five minutes be long enough?
That's fine, that's fine.
Sure, let's come back then at 25 past 12.
Thank you.
Okay, witnesses are all back and accounted for?
Thank you.
We'll, we'll continue on.
Mr Chair, can we just, can I just come back to a point, just so to say this, have you to be clarified on notice? I think there was earlier questions from yourself actually, on the chronology, that police meeting chronology, and that perhaps that we had a difference of opinion on the briefing on the 20th of January. I'm just going to get Mr Obadie if that's okay to explain it and I think it's actually borne out a little bit in the, in the police testimony as well. Just so we can have it on the head, if that's okay?
Sure. So I think it's on the, it's the hearing you had on the 7th of April, on the bottom of page six. Thertel outlines a couple of conversations he had on the phone. Firstly, he briefed the Premier on the phone at 9:25 and then also brings the Police Minister at 9:37 and those are both phone calls. That, that looks to be, and it, it, what was referenced there, so I would, I would suggest that, that first invited attendees, invited probably not the right word there, but it would be correct for the 9:25. 9:37 potentially, that's just an error, it looks like, based on that, based on that testimony.
Sorry, could you identify what the error is that you're saying?
So, so there was no- It doesn't, it doesn't look like there was a whole, a large meeting there.
There was certainly no, there was no briefing or conversation involving police and members of the Premier's office staff.
So just to clarify, at 9:37, the phone meeting, was the Premier there?
No.
No, that was a phone call between Thertel and the Minister for Police. Yes.
Was the Commissioner there?
The acting, acting Commissioner Thertel.
Was Deputy Commissioner Dave Hudson there?
It was just, I, my understanding is it was a phone call between the two.
Between which two?
Deputy Comis-, uh, acting Commissioner Thertel and the Minister for Police and Counterterrorism.
And, and what's that understanding based on? Sorry, Dr South, what records?
Conversation with the Minister.
So that's the Minister's personal recollection and there's no other notes of that?
No notes.
No, it was a phone call.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr Chair.
That's fine. We're all here about clarity and, and truth and honesty. That's what we're here to find.
Thank you. So if we could go to the document that you've been provided, which is the Situation Report, Whole of Government Response to Anti-Semitism, 7th February 2025. So this is clearly the week following the Premier declaring this can only be a terrorism event. And I just want to draw your attention there and note that dot point two there makes it very clear that-
Sorry, this is on page-
Uh, sorry, sorry. First, if we could just, sorry, the purpose of these documents, these situat-, so as I understand it, and you're welcome to suggest otherwise, but these documents are prepared from time to time from the social and community team that produces these reports. They're circulated to advisers to the Premier and other ministers, gathering together information from throughout government. Their purpose is to ensure that government has situational awareness around evolving issues and is updated about agency responses to these issues. So on the 7th February, shortly after the 29th January press conference, it's clear there that the advice from Premier's Department in dot point two on the front page says, "Frequency of anti-Semitic incidences has slowed" and then refers to, "The police are continuing to prevent, investigate and respond to anti-Semitic incidences through Strike Force Pearl and undertake community engagement efforts through Operation Shelter." Then at the, and the document is quite comprehensive about which organizations from the community have voiced concerns to the Premier's Office and others in government. And then at the end of that document, there is what is headed Talking Points. Those Talking Points refer to, "We are a strong, welcoming and connected society, one which respects the different views, faiths, backgrounds and cultures that make us stronger. There are a small number of individuals who wish to cause harm, to divide us and threaten our safety." There are a bunch of dot points there that talk about, "Together, we seek to overcome all forms of hate and violence so that every person living in New South Wales feels safe. Our focus must now be on rebuilding our bonds and ties, rebuilding a strong and welcome community. Each of us can play a part. We need to support each other, particularly young people," and so on. "We seek to address these challenging issues and this is a responsibility we all share." Then it has Principles for Communication and there are consistent points there. "Avoid trigger words and use words such as freedoms and rights. Write and left carefully and understand the springboards they provide for extreme and divisive commentary. Keep the focus on victims and empathy. Keep a strong focus on togetherness. Highlight the common ideals that bring nowhere, nowhere, Mr Cullen, can I see anywhere in this that we would suggest going out and declaring incidences terrorism events? Or, and nowhere, nowhere in this, I suggest, can I see that there is anything that would suggest maintaining, maintaining a belief in the community that terrorism events are on foot and live and being investigated is something that the Premier's Department's own advice suggests is the right thing to do. At what point did you or anyone advise the Premier it would be wise to make a public statement consistent with the advice of the Premier's Department?
Look, I, I would sort of take you back to answers I've provided the Chair about, you know, the Premier's commentary, the advice from police about basically not wanting to jeopardize a live investigation, which to be frank, to be frank, given the significance of that sort of investigation, that has to be a paramount concern. I mean, look, this is a, this is a very, like, this is actually a very good summary document, which as you say, Premier's Department do put together when there are incidents. Look, with respect, I mean, those Talking Points that you provided and Principles for Communication, I mean, they're very high, they're very high level in general in the, in the broader context.
Mr Cullen, can I just ask you if it's okay? We are running out of time. We're running out of time and it's okay.
We're hanging on, hearing Greg on the point of order.
With the greatest respect, Mr Cullen's provided a comprehensive answer to what was posed. The member went through a long tail lead-up and I think that the witness is entitled to provide his force of response. He's entitled to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I can go.
No, you can't. Have you finished, Mr Norton? Okay. You can go. I uphold the point of order. You can go.
Thank you. So, look, I, I think I would just sort of bring it back to walking and chewing gum. There was a lot going on here, the 12th to 18th months before, the increase in heightened tensions around anti-Semitism more broadly. This was not a document which was produced specifically as a response or update document in relation to, for example, the press conference on the 29th of January or that event. It's just not that specific. And the reality is that the Premier and the government and police were dealing with the broader settings- with the broader settings, other antisemitic events, responding more broadly, as well as police were doing their thing when it comes to the investigation, which is partly the subject matter of this inquiry.
So, Mr. Cullen, you're saying, in spite of advice here, frequency of antisemitic incidents have slowed, and the Talking Points that are in there, and the advice to the Premier, that it's okay that he doesn't follow that advice, or this advice didn't apply to him?
Um, yeah, again, I just don't think that's a, I just don't think that's a fair characterisation, I think there was clearly some broader things happening in the community, including you might recall related events to the Dural Caravan 14, but there was a much larger number of incidents in the community of which police were investigating, and there was, you know, in relation to that, a, a number of legislative responses which the government had been working through as well. So I think you've just got to look at it and bring it back to the, the broader context, there were a lot of things going on for an extended period of time, I mean, these conversations didn't start on the 19th of January, the 20th of January, or the 29th of January, there was things going on well before in this, in this area, this is a very generalised whole of government around the grounds, with some suggestions at the back regarding some language and how you, and how you deal with it, that's really not, to be frank, anything to do with the Dural Caravan incident investigation.
It's, so it doesn't apply to the Premier? Thank you.
Time is expounding, I've got a couple more to round up, and then I'm going to the government as promised, who have sat there very patiently, which I appreciate. Mr. Cullen, let's go back to the briefings with Dave Hudson. What questions did the Premier ask of Hudson in relation to the potential alternatives to terrorism?
Look, I, I, I think we need to respect the fact that the Premier has chosen not to appear and can't be compelled.
Yeah, sure.
So I think that's important.
That's why we need to ask first-hand questions of people that were present.
Well, with, with respect, I mean, I, I would argue that we shouldn't be proxies for-
You're not proxies.
Decisions.
Yeah, under, under a court case, you'll be described as giving direct evidence, you were there, you saw, you heard, you smelt, you touched, it's direct evidence, it's not proxy.
Let, let me try and be as helpful as I can in answering your question, I mean, generally, like, the format for these briefings would be, basically, the ball would be in the court of almost always Mr. Hudson to provide an update about where the investigation and related matters are, obviously other agencies were involved, to be frank, that probably took up a fair chunk of these briefings at each occasion, and then, yes, there would have been general questions to cover off on progress of the investigation and next steps.
You don't know what those questions were, though?
Well, look, I, I don't, I don't recall.
Okay, right, let's, in, in rounding this up now, as far as me, before we go into government, there was commentary from the Premier on Wednesday of this week, and I'll direct this to you, Ms. Michael, bearing in mind that you're his media officer, in terms of attacking the legitimacy, integrity, motivation perhaps of this committee, and in particular myself, he made a statement to the press in relation to my calling for tougher legislation for 93Z back from 2023, and told the media and the public that Roberts is kicking up this stink at this committee and didn't even vote for the legislation. Were you party to that statement? Did the Premier discuss his intention with you prior to that, and did anybody check the Hansard record as to how Roberts voted?
We would have, I mean, that may have been an error from the Premier.
Oh, an error from the Premier again, where he gets in front of a camera and gives his version and not the true facts, why would he have said that?
Well, he was going through the comments that you made previously.
Yes, supporting 93Z.
Yep, and changes.
And change, making it tougher.
Just making the point that the committee is trying to, well, the, the committee may be, you know, trying to ascertain that somehow Parliament was duped into passing these laws, and that's not the case.
Okay, can we just clarify this, we want this on the record, the Premier was wrong? He made a misleading-
I don't know, actually, I'm, I'm not sure, to be honest.
Chair, perhaps if you're asking questions about the Premier to his staff, I, I think that these questions would be much better directed to the Premier, who we know is appearing, who we know is appearing at budget estimates, it is procedurally unfair to be asking these witnesses, who are public officials, to express an opinion either way on a minister, on minister, what a minister said, or policy, for that matter.
There's no point of order because the witness has answered the question, the witness is the media advisor to the Premier, we are talking about a media statement that the Premier made, to which the witness said, and I'm not going to say she said he lied, or whatever it was, he was mistaken, he was wrong.
He may have been, I'm not, I'm not, he may have been, I'm not really, I, I do-
He may have got it wrong, if we were to check.
Well, I mean, if you say that you voted for the legislation and he may have said that you didn't, then obviously that's, that's an error, I mean, that's, which happens sometimes, you know?
Government members.
Thank you, Chair. Might just turn firstly to your appearance at this inquiry today, there are obviously issues that have been raised with respect to comedy, privileges of the Legislative Assembly, exclusive cognisance, are any of you subject matter experts in any of those areas of law?
I don't think there's any constitutional lawyers sitting at the table, Mr. Neva.
On that basis, you sought independent advice as to what your rights and obligations were with respect to being members of staff of Legislative Assembly members?
Sorry, we got independent advice, did we?
On that basis, you sought advice, legal advice, with respect to your, your rights and obligations as members of staff?
Abso- absolutely.
Correct.
On that basis, you acted on advice that there were, was a reasonable excuse and just cause to not appear before this committee on the basis of those issues, which are hotly contested, mind you, but effectively acted on that legal advice.
That's right.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn to the, to the guts of the inquiries Mr. Ruddock has, has very well articulated. If I could come in the first instance to a more broad-based question, where there are conditions that there are criminal incidents taking place, or where people are emboldened to do things in ways which we all agree are unacceptable, would it be fair to say that that becomes a focus of all of your offices with respect to how to deal with those issues, contend with those issues, and provide those affected communities with the comfort that they require?
Yes.
It's been put on evidence and it's been referred to a number of times today, that there was an obvious increase in incidents of behaviour with respect to antisemitism, that's correct?
I mean, abso-, I mean, I think, I think that's the, I, I think the numbers have been clearly articulated by police, specifically in relation to Operation Shelter and how that grew over a period of time.
On that basis, there was a significant amount of discussion, presumably over a significant period of time, in light of the escalated incidents of antisemitism, to give police and the community additional powers with respect to deal with those issues?
Yeah, I, I mean, absolutely, and as I've said before, Mr. Neva, sorry, earlier on, that the three pieces of legislation, which are in part the, the subject of this inquiry and the process that led to their passage through the Parliament, there was, not, not only was there public comments from the Premier outlining the government's position to push forward on all three of those before the 19th of January, there was also work underway within the government more broadly, and then relevant departments and agencies to provide advice and do the policymaking and do the legislative drafting on all three of those two.
So all of those, all of those conversations and consideration of those matters occurred well in advance of the discovery of a caravan in early 2020?
Yeah, I mean, this was a long-run unfortunate episode in terms of increased incidents of antisemitism, very unfortunate, but the government did over a period of time, including prior to the passage of this, these three pieces of legislation, continue to work at the most effective ways, along with law enforcement, along with multicultural New South Wales, and other agencies to address the broader challenges around community harmony and making sure that we weren't having an important community so victimised.
So regardless of whether, you know, these incidents were orchestrated, as we've now found out through the course of the investigation, there were special circumstances that led to the government feeling compelled to act with respect to that specific case of antisemitism?
Sorry, regarding the Dural Caravan incident?
No, no, just more broadly, the government felt compelled to act because of a series of cases of antisemitism.
It's just a, it's a, it's a, look, it's on, it's just a matter that's on the record, and there were significant public debates around all three pieces of that legislation and other events outside of the 14 that were attached to the Dural Caravan incident, in terms of antisemit-, antisemitism events that Operation Shelter was investigating, that the government was, took into consideration in developing those legislative responses.
Were there other incidents beyond Operation Shelter, perhaps through the Community Security Group that-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I did mention in Porsley, I, I don't have the numbers to hand, but I, I have, I have no doubt that there would have been reports to that particular group, and I have no doubt that there would have been many, many undocumented concerns in terms of incidents of antisemitism.
They, I can help you there, Mr. Neva, they, they told me they had several hundred additional to what the police are dealing with.
Several hundred, okay, thank you. If I can come to the briefings that your respective officers received, going to the briefings of the 20th and the 21st, so at, at both of those briefings, there was no doubt, it was unequivocal, that the Premier and the Minister were both advised that this was a joint counter-terrorism team investigation, that's correct?
Very clear.
On that basis, then it would be fair to assume that the event had to be taken seriously as a form of potential violent extremism or terrorism?
Yeah, I mean, this was, you know, in the testimony of New South Wales Police, an investigation that was conducted at its highest levels all the way through, and, you know, we don't, we don't have to go back over the timeline, but yes.
It's been put to this committee that it would be not just a fair assessment, but it would be irresponsible not to treat it that way, that it could have been a potential terrorism event or risk of violent extremism by virtue of the fact that the JCTT was responsible for the investigation.
Absolutely, and, and to be fair, the Chair, that's, I mean, I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think that's the, that's the view he's got, I mean, it would be irresponsible for police to have done anything other than that.
If I can come to the doubts that may have been expressed in the course of those meetings by Deputy Commissioner Hudson or even the Commissioner herself, there are a number of references on the transcript which I'll quote, feel free to take these on notice, or if you can confirm with the committee whether they are consistent with your recollection of those briefings, Deputy Commissioner Hudson has said in relation to the doubts that he expressed in the briefing, the possibility of other options, I quote directly, rather than being a terrorist attack, were provided to Minister and Premier early, but whilst the reporting was continuing, we could not discount that, had to be investigated at its heist.
Yeah.
Is that consistent with your recollection?
It's, it's absolutely consistent, and I hope it's consistent with the evidence that I've given today.
Is it consistent with your recollection, and again, and I quote, I expressed my suspicion over the motivation, but the reporting received through the Australian Federal Police, which could not be ignored at the level it was being provided, kept it at a level that needed to be investigated by the Joint Counter-Terrorism Team.
That's right.
That's consistent with your recollection?
With the, with the briefings that we're getting from police, that's correct.
And on the basis that we have heard, it's not only fair, but it would be irresponsible, given that it was a joint counter-terrorism investigation, to not treat it as a potential mass casualty event.
Correct.
Okay, with respect to the Commissioner, she has provided this committee evidence, and again, I'll quote, perhaps I'll direct this to you, Mr. Nielsen, while it didn't seem quite right that there was a caravan that just happened to be discovered with explosive with notes, and not too carefully hidden or secret, ultimately, the issue was about we were relying on information from the AFP, without being able to test that information, we had to take it at its heist. Was that consistent with the manner in which New South Wales Police continued to investigate this matter through the Joint Counter-Terrorism Team?
That's what they briefed us, yes, that they, they were in a position where the AFP had a source, it was being referred to frequently, they didn't know who that was, and they wouldn't tell them, and so until they knew that and the whole thing was resolved, they had to keep investigating this as though it could be a potential mass casualty event, when you've got a large amount of explosives in a 40-metre blast zone, which is all phrases that have been used by police, that's exactly right.
At what point were those doubts turned into, well, those doubts formed into a unequivocal conclusion that it was a criminal hoax?
Mr. Hudson briefed the Minister on the 7th of March that on the 5th of March, New South Wales Police had finally, oh, actually, the JCTT had finally received a legal advising from the federal police, which they'd asked for, I think, some, maybe perhaps a week earlier, as to whether it was still possible to prefer terrorism charges based on the information that they had. The advice arrived on the 5th of March that, no, the answer is no, terrorism charges can't be stood up on this, Mr. Hudson briefed the Minister, my minister on the 7th, and at the same time, he advised her that, that they were quote-unquote moving to resolution on Monday the 10th, and that morning from daylight, a, a large number of premises, a large number of warrants were executed all over Sydney, and a large number of people were arrested, and that was kind of the end of the matter.
So notwithstanding doubts expressed on the 20th and 21st, terrorism was unequivocally ruled out with the Premier and the-
On the 7th of March.
From the 7th of March, so if I can be very clear about the timeline of events-
That was, that was the time we were told they had completely concluded that that wasn't a possibility.
Okay, so on the 20th and 21st, we're advised that it was a joint counter-terrorism team operation, while there might have been other motivations, it would be irresponsible to not treat it as a potential terrorism event, and that was ruled out unequivocally on the 7th of March, when you were advised that the AFP informant was discredited.
That was the 21st, that was the 21st of February?
They were, they were told by the AFP that the informant was discredited on the 21st of February, but the legal advice as to whether potential terrorism charges could still be levelled against the people that they were investigating, didn't come until the 5th of March, and then the conclusion that that wasn't going to happen was transmitted to the Minister on the 7th.
Can I just foreshadow something that might assist the government? I've got another line of inquiry I need to get through, and I know that other members do as well, now, it may be the case that we have to re-invite these witnesses back to provide further evidence, if we're not able to get these lines of inquiry out in the next 10 minutes.
I'm sorry, with, with all due respect-
No, 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 let me comment, I'm not going to entertain that, Mr. Thing, the government are entitled to ask questions, they've been very patient, we're going to be extremely fair here, if we have to call the witnesses back again, or call them back again, because Mr. Walker has provided us and provided the counsel-
And that's one of his full-
-with advice and opinion that we're entitled to do so, so the government are entitled to ask their questions, so continue on, Mr. Neva.
Thank you, Chair, if I can turn briefly, and I, you know, I don't propose to take up all the time, there has been a suggestion that the Parliament was misled, because it wasn't informed of the full circumstances surrounding the discovery of explosions in the caravan, now, it is now a matter of public record, the doubts were expressed in the press conference of the 29th of January and the following day on the 30th, was there any other information that was not publicly, made public, that, that could have expressed any doubts with respect to the status of the investigation of the, of the caravan in Dural? Was there any other, was there anything not disclosed that could have shed more light on the issue?
I often observed about this whole episode, that anyone in the Parliament who feels they were misled when the legislation passed on the 21st, wasn't paying attention very closely for the previous three or four weeks, because on the 29th of January, in the press conference and the next morning on 2GB, Mr. Hudson could not have been more explicit, he said this is, there are, there are many lines of inquiry, and he, he made direct allusions, I can read them for you if you want, we've all got them, to the potential that it was some kind of criminal enterprise or, or what have you.
But there was nothing further that you or your officers were aware of that could have shed any more light other than what was publicly disclosed?
No, we only knew that, because, you know, he, he had told us the same things that he told Ben Fordham.
Okay, the final question from me is just in relation to the three pieces of legislation that did go through the Parliament, the, the AFP has stated in a press release of the 10th of March, regardless of the motivation of those responsible for the fake plot, this has had a chilling effect on the Jewish community, this twisted self-serving criminality has terrorised Jewish Australians, is that consistent with your view?
Indeed.
Also consistent with the, some of the comments the, the Premier was making on the 29th of January.
So the motivations and the merit of the legislation still stands in the eye of the government?
Look, no question, but I, I do accept, as I said to Mr. Riddick earlier- Look, no question, but I do accept, as I said to Mr Ruddock earlier, that he does have legislation in the Parliament. I suppose if you follow through the conclusion that there are a number of members of the upper house who think that they've been duped in relation to the passage of these pieces of legislation, it's open to this committee to produce a report which recommends repeal. Mr Ruddock's bill's there, that's perhaps a matter for members of this committee and for the members of the upper house.
Thank you, Chair, we do have further questions, but I'm happy to allow Mr Fang to ask his.
So in the interest of conceding then?
Well, in the interest of not having further debate, but we do have further questions.
Mr Cullen, did the Premier ever suggest to you you shouldn't attend this hearing?
I think the Premier's view is public on this. He's, he's provided a view, I think it's been, it's been recounted, I think by the Chair in an interview with Ben Fordham as well. He's got a view, he's got a strong view about ministerial staff being called, I think we've, we've all done, we've all done the rounds on that.
That's not an answer to the question, did the Premier ever suggest to you you should not attend this hearing?
Well, he made, he put a public position on it, so I think it was for everybody, including myself, to hear that.
I will draw from that inference, given the information on Ben Fordham that he did.
No, well, I think your question is, was there a formal or informal direction from the Premier? And I've already provided evidence to tell you that there wasn't.
There wasn't, okay. In the reverse of that then, did the Premier ever suggest to you that you should attend this hearing?
I, I think the Premier's view is on the public record in relation to should ministerial staff, as a matter of course, be called for and appeared and summoned and be arrested, potentially jailed and held overnight for appearing.
Why are you being so evasive, Mr Cullen? It's a simple question.
I'm going to uphold the point of order, you're done here.
Okay, all right.
So, Mr Cullen, did you have any conversations with the Premier about whether you should or should not attend these hearings?
I think I've given lots of evidence on this to say, Mr Chair, with respect, that the conversations I was having with the Premier on this subject matter, particularly in relation to our appearance or non-appearance at this committee, was confined to him, briefing him in the course of the last few weeks, as this has become effectively a matter of public controversy, and so he's had to comment on that, so I've had conversations around that, yes.
Mr Nielsen, did you have conversations with Minister Catley about whether you should or should not attend these hearings?
Yeah, she agreed with me that we shouldn't.
So you led that conversation or she led that conversation?
We talk every day, many times, every day.
In relation to that then, Mr Nielsen, Mr Cullen, I would contend that both the Premier and the Minister for Police have breached the ministerial code of conduct by providing you an instruction to not attend this hearing.
No, that's not true. There's been a point of order taken, yes.
Sorry, Chair, that was not the evidence provided by the witness.
Well, I'm going to provide, I'm going to table these documents.
Provide an instruction to.
Can I respond, Chair?
Well, I've made the allegation.
Hang on, I haven't ruled on the point of order yet. I'm going to be honest and say I wasn't listening, all right? I'm going to be honest and say I wasn't quite listening to exactly what, can you put your question again and then I'll rule on it if, if your point of order stands?
It is my, it is my contention that the Minister for Police and the Premier have breached their ministerial code of conduct by suggesting not attending this hearing, and Mr Nielsen, you gave evidence that the Minister agreed with you that you should not attend.
She agreed with me that staffers shouldn't be called to these hearings, she agrees with me strongly about that.
As I've said, Mr, Mr Fang before many times, the Premier did not give a formal or informal direction. So you're suggesting that he's breached the ministerial code by giving an unlawful direction, that's just simply not the case.
The Premier made it clear in the interview with Ben Fordham that he had multiple discussions with you about this matter and that he was clear that he did not want you to attend, that is an informal or an indirect instruction, that is a breach of the ministerial code of conduct.
I'm sorry, some of us didn't get a copy of the document that's been tabled.
Chair, just to assist with a reminder of the time, can I suggest that if Mr Fang's got a question, that he put it as opposed to just making repeated statements to the witnesses about his interpretation of the ministerial code and events that have happened?
Well, I've made one, I've made it clear, I believe the Premier and the Minister for Police have breached the ministerial code of conduct.
Engaged in gratuitous commentary.
Lawful directions to the public service, number subsection one, a minister must not knowingly issue any direction. He didn't issue any direction, I don't know how many times I have to tell you. That's my evidence.
Have you got another question?
No, no, I'm happy to hand over.
Can I ask one last question? Can I ask any of you who came up with the reference to Star Chamber? Is, Ms Michael, you are the media adviser, could you tell me where that came from for the Premier to come up? Was it from the Premier himself, was it from you guys?
Premier is very.
Sorry, you, sorry, what was that, Ms Michael?
I can't tell you where it came from now.
As in, you can't tell me or you don't know?
No, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
The Premier is very, a very, very creative person, as you, as you've all worked out, and can be colourful with his language, and he's more than capable of coming up with his own turns of phrase. And I think, to be fair to the Premier, I think that particular terminology, it's, would not be the first time that has been used in relation to committee inquiries.
Sorry, so you, is your evidence, the Premier himself came up with that, with that characterisation of the New South Wales Legislative Council?
That's, it might have, it might have been in relation to the committee rather than the Legislative Council, so I have to take that bit on notice, but that's my understanding is, yes, he came up with that.
Thank you.
Chair, we, we didn't have a five-minute break on the agenda, is it possible to have a five-minute extension?
It is, because we were sat down for three hours. I acceded to the request of the witnesses, which is only fair to do, and I proposed to go for an extra five minutes to give us the three hours.
And on that question, we've got.
I mean, there was a presumption, and it may be incorrect, we were finishing on time. I appreciate it's been extended by five, I don't cavil with your decision, but we've got questions.
I'm going to ask Mr Ruddock and then go back to the government, all right? It's the only way I can do it.
So I have a question for Mr Cullen, so you've given us the impression today that these laws, they have a gestation period. So is the government at the moment considering any future suite of anti-free speech laws?
I think that's a very unfortunate characterisation, Mr Ruddock, so I don't agree with you, but you're talking about.
Anti-hate speech laws, but it is suppressing free speech through, via law, that's what we're doing. Let's move on from the characterisation, the key question is, is this the end of it or have we got more plans in the future to suppress free speech?
I'm not aware of anything in particular in terms of further alterations to that law, noting that there's, there's probably a Law Reform Commission report that is, or review or inquiry process underway that hasn't been concluded. Maybe that's anti-discrimination legislation and that hasn't been concluded, that's probably not in the same space, so not to my knowledge, Mr Ruddock.
Okay, thank you.
Government.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, thank you very much, and thank you for your frank evidence this morning to all the witnesses and your responsiveness to those questions. The issue of hoax has featured a great deal in discourse both inside the Parliament and outside the Parliament. And I just want to sort of focus on that for a moment, perhaps to you, Mr Cullen, but others may make a comment at this time, that it's been mentioned extensively in this hearing and in the public domain that this incident and related events were a hoax. A hoax.
Yeah.
And I think it's a general understanding, a common understanding of the meaning of hoax, how do you respond to that?
Look, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, I might have sort of referred on it previously. I think some of the language that's been thrown up is not helpful because I do think you need to separate a bit motivation with actions and the impact those actions have had. But, you know, particularly, we're talking about the Dural inquiry and those fourteen incidents. We're talking, as I understand, alleged fire bombings, alleged graffitiing of synagogues. Those are events that, their very action does inspire fear and concern in the broader community and particularly in the Jewish community. I don't have it in front of me, but I think the, the actual best summation of the concern with that kind of language was actually the Member for Vore Clues, I think, appearing before the antisemitism inquiry, where she actually responded directly to the concept of hoax, and I thought spoke quite eloquently on behalf of her community, including the Jewish community, which she's got significant presence in her electorate, rejecting the concept of a hoax and just focusing on the fact that how much the last twelve to eighteen months, the level of antisemitism being on the rise, but these particular series of events, which, let's be frank, could have, could have resulted in the death or maiming of people in the community. She expressed the highest level of concern and I would share that.
Thank you.
Thanks, through you, Chair, I just wanted to start by acknowledging each and every one of you and thanking you for being here today. But I also wanted to just make the brief comment of how grateful we are for the hard work that you do in each and every day, for our ministers and for our government. It is a hard job being a ministerial staffer, working in a ministerial office. You do it all very professionally, with grace, and I for one know how hard and dedicated and professional each and every one of you are every day in the work that you do.
So I just wanted to start my remarks with that, given everyone else is engaged in gratuitous commentary on the record. Now, it's been suggested that there haven't been any antisemitic incidents since the tenth of March. Have you got any reflections on that?
Sorry, since the tenth of March? Well, I mean, I mean, no, there's more that continue to certainly crop up in public debate, and I think I was saying in relation to an earlier answer to Mr Ruddock, I think there was an instance just this week, I think I'm right in saying of, of a swastika being graffitied on Maryfield Police Station. So, no, look, it's unfortunate, I, I would, I mean, you can argue about the, you can argue about the curve, but I think the reality is there are unfortunately still significant events and incidents which are being brought, not just to the police attention, but other events which continue to go unreported, I think it is of significant concern. I think in terms of the way the government's responded though, those pieces of legislation do play a small and significant part in terms of on behalf of the community saying, we're not going to accept those forms of poor conduct and we are, we are going to do something about it, and we're going to reiterate the sort of strong, robust, multicultural, beautiful, harmonious community that we all aspire to live in all the time.
Okay, I do know the time is five minutes past one, the witnesses were here for three hours, the three hours has expired. And let me just find my other folder. I know witnesses have taken some questions on notice, the Secretariat will be in contact with you in relation to that.
May I ask indulgence if the witnesses would answer one more question? Would the witnesses be?
No, 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 the time is the time. Okay, yeah, right, thank you for your evidence, the Secretariat will be in contact with you if any questions are taken on notice.
Thank you.